All right, good morning, Los Angeles. September 11th, this will be the council meeting for Friday, September 11th. Welcome to Council Chambers, Los Angeles City Hall. This will be the Los Angeles City Council. We meet three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. All meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35 or can be viewed by visiting our website, www.lacity.org. Audio of our meetings is available on council phone by dialing 213-621-CITY. I am Councilmember Dennis B. Zine. And I want to thank council members who are here, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weisar, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, for joining us. And I'd like to, Mr. Clerk, we will begin with a couple of presentations. Before we do the presentations, since this is September 11th, I think we should all stand in memory, eight years ago, on this day, there was a tragic attack on America. Happened 8:46 a.m. and 10:28 a.m. 3,017 people lost their lives. 6,291 were injured, September 11, 2001. Stand in memory of those who lost their lives and our brave military personnel. A moment of silence. May they rest in peace. Thank you. We'll begin with Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I thank you for calling us to order in that moment of silence. And the tragedy, among all tragedies of 9/11, is those 3,000-plus victims will never hear a baby cry, a baby laugh, a baby sing in the mother's arms. Now, let's give our beautiful baby back here a hand. I don't know that baby's name, but it's all about life. And as we go forward and go on, that's the beauty of life. And we remember those who lost their lives, they never could hear that again. Over 18 years ago, under the direction of the mayor and the city council, they formed the efforts of emergency preparedness as a fallout from the Northridge earthquake. All this is key and important as we move forward in informing the public to be prepared for a natural disaster. The city of Los Angeles is blessed with Jim Featherstone, who is the general manager of the Department of Emergency Preparedness. And as an outreach, he and his staff worked with Target Department Stores, as well as other organizations, to help promote coming events for emergency preparedness. This is Emergency Preparedness Month. Please welcome Jim Featherstone, general manager of Emergency Preparedness.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Today, as you mentioned, marks the eighth anniversary of 9/11, excuse me, of the 9/11 attacks, which several hundred, well, several, 2,700 people perished in New York and 200 people perished at the Pentagon and in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. It remains a vivid memory for all of us. It will forever be a defining moment in our nation's history. This is also September, National Preparedness Month. It's a month that we honor and look at the efforts of our emergency service personnel, our community emergency response effort, and et cetera. It's also a time to rededicate our efforts and consciousness toward being prepared. The Stafford Act, which is the foundational federal doctrine for disaster response, talks about 13 major disasters. Nine of those disasters could befall the city of Los Angeles at any time. So as we prepare for one thing, we prepare for all things. There are four things that tend to keep the emergency management department awake at night: pandemic influenza, the results of a terrorist attack, catastrophic wildfire, a catastrophic earthquake. All of those are not when, but if, I'm sorry, not if, but when they will happen. So as we say, as we prepare for one, we prepare for all. So thank you for having us in council chambers this morning. Also, thank you for honoring one of our corporate citizens, Target Corporation. And with that, Councilmember?
Well, Jim, I wonder if you would join with me on behalf of Greg Smith, the great councilman who truly does it. Mr. Rosendahl, jump up here, because you're always involved with preparedness. We want to salute Target Department Store. And this is the representative from Target. She is absolutely always on target. A high percentage, is it 5%?
5%.
5% each week goes to the community from Target Department Store. Give Target a big hand. And this is our number one person, Jada Curtis, on behalf of Target. Give Jada a big hand.
Well, I am, I am quite honored to be here, and I know Target is very honored to be represented here and just really recognized by all of you guys as well. So I know we've done a lot in Los Angeles County, that 5% equals to $3 million a week that we give back to our community. So this is just really, really appreciative of being honored here today. So thank you very much to all of you.
We're always on target with Target.
Mr. Rosendahl. Yeah, I did push my button, but Tommy asked me to come right to this particular podium. I can just reemphasize what's been said. We live in a very vulnerable area. Right now, we're in the fire season. We obviously can be in the mudslide season after fires, and we could obviously have an earthquake at any moment in time. We could also, in Venice, have a tsunami that could come in and impact part of the community and a little bit of the part of the lower part of the Pacific Palisades area there. I just want to do a shout out to the folks in the 11th district, the coastal district, who have been a very vibrant part of emergency preparedness. About six months ago, in Mar Vista, on the top of the hill there, we had a drill and an experience, and everybody, or a couple hundred community people there for that. We take emergency preparedness very seriously in the district. I know the whole city does. But I say to everybody out there, remember again, get the flashlight, get some candles, you know, get some water, get some canned food that you can open without an electric can opener, and get a first aid kit. You must have all this, all the time, 24/7. You should have a packet in your car, in case you're on the freeway and a situation happens, but definitely in your home. You should also have an ability to communicate with members of your family. It might not necessarily be a working cellphone that's going to be there, but you need to know how to connect with each other. We all hope we're at home when these things happen, but we just don't know where we're going to be. So I say to everybody who's catching this on the tube, or is going to write about it or put it on television, is be prepared now for what might happen tomorrow. Thank you.
Good job. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We now have our core, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weisar, Mr. Coretts, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, Brian, when you want to call the role, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weisar, Coretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcia, 10 members present and a core, Mr. President.
Thank you. And we're going to continue with presentations. Our next presentation, Mr. Coretts.
As you may all know, today is our country's official national day of service. And I think that's great, because we want to honor all the volunteers that do such a phenomenal job of public service. But volunteerism actually takes place every day, and that will certainly include this upcoming September 22nd. That's the day we declare UCLA Volunteer Day in the city of Los Angeles. And that's when UCLA will kick off its Volunteer Day, which will represent the largest community participation day in the university's history. And as a proud UCLA graduate myself, I have great memories of volunteering as a student in political, social, and humanitarian causes. Those efforts touched my heart, shaped my mind, and gifted me with a genuine spirit of civic involvement. It's so important that young adults benefit from that type of socially involved experience. And I'm sure my daughter Rachel, an incoming UCLA freshman, will be an active participant at the Volunteer Center. Many of you have already seen her here volunteering her assistance as part of our Feline Friday cat adoption events. I'm thrilled that she and her fellow students have this great opportunity. And here to tell us all about it is Antoinette Mungeli, executive director of the UCLA Volunteer Center. She is joined by Keith Parker, Assistant Vice Chancellor of UCLA, David Bloom of the Volunteer Center, and Felicia Brandon, executive director of Community and Government Relations at UCLA.
Thank you, Councilmember Coretts, city council members, mayor's office, and especially thank you Deputy Mayor Miriam Long for your help and guidance in this amazing partnership with the city and UCLA. We are thrilled to receive on behalf of UCLA this wonderful honor. As Councilmember member mentioned, I'm the executive director of the new UCLA Volunteer Center, and I'm also a proud citizen of Los Angeles. It is so gratifying to be able to combine my passion for service and my love for this city. And how appropriate that the National Day of Remembrance and Service, that we talk about volunteerism. Chancellor Jean Block wanted to enhance our mission of service by creating UCLA Volunteer Center. The goal of the Volunteer Center is to inspire our citizens to build a community of heroes in sustainable participation in the volunteer movement. This center is a major new online resource that connects users to thousands of volunteer opportunities to share in their ideas of what it means to be a citizen. As a university, the goal is to inculcate students from the moment they enter campus to the time they graduate, that volunteerism and service is a key component of building tomorrow's leaders. UCLA has sent thousands of students, staff, faculty all over the world. We've donated money, books, food, and clothing. Students have held walkathons, dance, marathons, and blood drives. There's a UCLA chapter of Habitat for Humanity. We believe it is important, as a public university, to take our citizenship seriously. The need to be engaged in the city we work, study, and live is a necessary part of a vital democracy. Many of the city's current elected officials have started their community service while volunteering at UCLA. Just a short list of UCLA alumni who now give back to this great city: Mayor Viera Ragosa, City Controller Wendy Gruel, Councilmembers Coretts, Reyes, Weisar, Council President Garcia, I think also went to the University Elementary School. At UCLA, we first, we have frequent opportunities to use the word biggest, first, and best. Now UCLA Volunteer Campaign Director David Bloom will tell you something about Volunteer Day. We believe it is the largest single-day university community participation in the country. Thank you.
I'm David Bloom. I will briefly describe Volunteer Day. I was born and raised in Los Angeles. I went to all public schools, El Camino Real High School in Woodland Hills, UCLA. So it's really a dream come true to be in front of the leadership of my city and tell you what we're about to do. And it's truly spectacular, and I think it has ramifications for everyone in this room. On September 22nd, 100 buses are simultaneously coming up to our resident halls.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Today, as you mentioned, it marks the eighth anniversary of nine eleven, excuse me, of the nine eleven attacks, which several hundred, well, several, 2,700 people perished in New York and 200 people perished at the Pentagon and in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. It remains a vivid memory for all of us. It will forever be a defining moment in our nation's history. This is also September, National Preparedness Month. It's a month that we honor and look at the efforts of our emergency service personnel, our community emergency response effort, and et cetera. It's also a time to rededicate our efforts and consciousness toward being prepared. The Stafford Act, which is the foundational federal doctrine for disaster response, talks about 13 major disasters. Nine of those disasters could befall the city of Los Angeles at any time. So as we prepare for one thing, we prepare for all things. There are four things that tend to keep the emergency management department awake at night: pandemic influenza, the results of a terrorist attack, catastrophic wildfire, a catastrophic earthquake. All of those are not when, but if, I'm sorry, not if, but when they will happen. So as we say, as we prepare for one, we prepare for all. So thank you for having us in council chambers this morning. Also, thank you for honoring one of our corporate citizens, Target Corporation. And with that, Councilmember.
Well, Jim, I wonder if you would join with me on behalf of Greg Smith, the great councilman who truly does it. Mr. Rosendahl, jump up here because you're always involved with preparedness. We want to salute Target Department Store. And this is the representative from Target. She is absolutely always on target. A high percentage, is it 5%?
5%.
5% each week goes to the community from Target Department Store. Give Target a big hand. And this is their number one person, Jada Curtis, on behalf of Target. Give Jada a big hand.
Well, I am, I am quite honored to be here, and I know Target is very honored to be represented here and just really recognized by all of you guys as well. So I know we've done a lot in Los Angeles County, that 5% equals to $3 million a week that we give back to our community. So this is just really, I'm really appreciative of being honored here today. So thank you very much to all of you.
We're always on target with Target.
And Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I did push my button, but Tommy asked me to come right to this particular podium. I can just reemphasize what's been said. We live in a very vulnerable area right now. We're in the fire season. We obviously can be in the mudslide season after fires, and we could obviously have an earthquake at any moment in time. We could also, in Venice, have a tsunami that could come in and impact part of the community and a little bit of the part of the lower part of the Pacific Palisades area there. I just want to do a shout out to the folks in the 11th District, the coastal district, who have been a very vibrant part of emergency preparedness. About six months ago, in Mar Vista, on the top of the hill there, we had a drill and an experience, and everybody or a couple hundred community people there for that. We take emergency preparedness very seriously in the district. I know the whole city does. But I say to everybody out there, remember again, get the flashlight, get some candles, you know, get some water, get some canned food that you can open without an electric can opener, and get a first aid kit. You must have all this all the time, 24/7. You should have a packet in your car in case you're on the freeway and a situation happens, but definitely in your home. You should also have an ability to communicate with members of your family. It might not necessarily be a working cellphone that's going to be there, but you need to know how to connect with each other. We all hope we're at home when these things happen, but we just don't know where we're going to be. So I say to everybody who's catching this on the tube or is going to write about it or put it on television, is be prepared now for what might happen tomorrow. Thank you.
Good job. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We now have our core, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Zine. Brian, when you want to call the role, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a core, Ms. President.
Thank you. And we're going to continue with presentations.
Well, as you may all know, today is our country's official National Day of Service. And I think that's great because we want to honor all the volunteers that do such a phenomenal job of public service. But volunteerism actually takes place every day, and that will certainly include this upcoming September 22nd. That's the day we declare UCLA Volunteer Day in the city of Los Angeles. And that's when UCLA will kick off its Volunteer Day, which will represent the largest community participation day in the university's history. And as a proud UCLA graduate myself, I have great memories of volunteering as a student in political, social, and humanitarian causes. Those efforts touched my heart, shaped my mind, and gifted me with a genuine spirit of civic involvement. It's so important that young adults benefit from that type of socially involved experience. And I'm sure my daughter Rachel, an incoming UCLA freshman, will be an active participant at the Volunteer Center. Many of you have already seen her here volunteering her assistance as part of our Feline Friday cat adoption events. I'm thrilled that she and her fellow students have this great opportunity. And here to tell us all about it is Antoinette Mungeli, Executive Director of the UCLA Volunteer Center. She is joined by Keith Parker, Assistant Vice Chancellor of UCLA, David Bloom of the Volunteer Center, and Felicia Brandon, Executive Director of Community and Government Relations at UCLA.
Thank you, Councilman Corretts, City Councilmembers, Mayor's Office, and especially thank you Deputy Mayor Miriam Long for your help and guidance in this amazing partnership with the city and UCLA. We are thrilled to receive on behalf of UCLA this wonderful honor. As Councilmember mentioned, I'm the Executive Director of the new UCLA Volunteer Center, and I'm also a proud citizen of Los Angeles. It is so gratifying to be able to combine my passion for service and my love for this city, and how appropriate that the National Day of Remembrance and Service that we talk about volunteerism. Chancellor Jean Block wanted to enhance our mission of service by creating UCLA Volunteer Center. The goal of the Volunteer Center is to inspire our citizens to build a community of heroes in sustainable participation in the volunteer movement. This center is a major new online resource that connects users to thousands of volunteer opportunities to share in their ideas of what it means to be a citizen. As a university, the goal is to inculcate students from the moment they enter campus to the time they graduate, that volunteerism and service is a key component of building tomorrow's leaders. UCLA has sent thousands of students, staff, faculty all over the world. We've donated money, books, food, and clothing. Students have held walkathons, dance, marathons, and blood drives. There's a UCLA chapter of Habitat for Humanity. We believe it is important, as a public university, to take our citizenship seriously. The need to be engaged in the city we work, study, and live is a necessary part of a vital democracy. Many of the city's current elected officials have started their community service while volunteering at UCLA. Just a short list of UCLA alumni who now give back to this great city: Mayor Vierregosa, City Controller Wendy Gruel, Councilmembers Corretts, Reyes, Weezer, Council President Garcetti, I think, also went to the University Elementary School. At UCLA, we first, we have frequent opportunities, to use the word biggest, first, and best. Now UCLA Volunteer Campaign Director David Bloom will tell you something about Volunteer Day. We believe it is the largest single-day university community participation in the country. Thank you.
I'm David Bloom. I will briefly describe Volunteer Day. I was born and raised in Los Angeles. I went to all public schools, El Camino Real High School in Woodland Hills, UCLA. So it's really a dream come true to be in front of the leadership of my city and tell you what we're about to do. And it's truly spectacular, and I think it has ramifications for everyone in this room. On September 22nd, 100 buses are simultaneously coming up to our resident halls. Over 5,000 students will embark on these buses. This is before the students take their first class at UCLA. And the message we're giving them is, we're serious about civic engagement and volunteer participation. These buses will fan out all over the city. They're going to Gompers Middle School, which is a mayor's partnership school. They're going to Groats Elementary School, Contreras High School, Kester Elementary School, University High School. We're sending teams to the VA Hospital, to Point Dume State Park, and this will make Councilman Labonge happy. We're sending, we have 13 different sites in Griffith Park that we will simultaneously go to. The logistics and planning of doing something this scale is truly amazing, and I'm very proud of the entire UCLA family for coming together. The students will be out there, they'll have their UCLA T-shirts, they will be doing cleanup projects, they will get back on the bus, and we will celebrate. This was possible, we didn't spend any public money. The Entertainment Industry Foundation, who yesterday started their I Participate campaign in New York, has underwritten us. So we'd like to thank them and our partners, LA Works. So we again thank you for this great honor, and we look forward to making LA very proud on September 22nd.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to stand as a proud Bruin and thank UCLA for their presence. As a youngster, I took the bus from the East Side all the way down Wilshire to get to UCLA. As I traveled through the neighborhoods, and I got to Westwood, I was always in a state of wonder of how different and beautiful this campus was and this part of the city.
Emerald City.
And now we're showing today that UCLA is not just about Westwood, it's about the whole city, and that you're bringing in the parts of the city that tend to get overlooked, that some might consider undesirable, but I call home. And I thank you for that presence because we need to show everyone that UCLA is a public school.
Yep.
It's a tax-based school from our own wallet, and that it gives back time and time again, and it's making this city great. I want to thank Councilman Corretts for bringing you here today so we can amplify and actually celebrate this great occasion. Thank you, Keith Pritzker, for all you do in this great city, and the volunteers, all the Bruins. Let's go out there with pride, let them show that UCLA is about the whole city, about the whole region, indeed, the whole nation. So thank you so much, and congratulations to you.
We want to invite all of you to participate. Thank you very much.
I want to hear it one more time for El Camino High School. You mentioned that wonderful high school out in the 3rd Council District. Also, we have Mr. Wesson, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labonge, so don't go away.
Yeah, I think you guys need to, hopefully, you don't need to sit down because I think there'll be a few more minutes of discussion where it relates to UCLA. I too want to, but I see my dear friend Keith Parker sat down, so I, see, now I guilted him into standing back up, but.
Thank you for getting Robinson Stadium.
When I was first elected to the Assembly, I had the opportunity to be invited to UCLA. They offered me all kinds of resources, and I think were really instrumental in helping my office become a professional office. When I was sworn in as Speaker, I had a celebration at the campus, and we had about 2,400 people there. Like I said, Keith Parker and I have been friends for quite a while, and be assured we're going to reopen the Rancho Stadium on September 18th. And just for trivia, Felicia Brandon's brother is a surgeon who saved one of my son's life when he was in an accident. But I don't rise just to talk about UCLA, it's just kind of weird. Paul Corretts and I, for those of you that don't know, served together in the Assembly. And when we were going through redistricting, Paul came up to me, and he said, Paul was my Chair of Labor, the Labor Committee. In fact, I wasn't Speaker then, I was going to be Speaker, and I was Speaker-in-waiting, and I was engaged in redistricting. So Paul came up and he said, there's only one thing that I want you to do, Herb, to ensure that UCLA remains in the district that I represent. 24 hours later, I put UCLA in my district. And I guess turnabout is fair play because you got it back. Okay? But anyway, thank you for all that you do, but I just thought that would be, I'll never forget, I gotta keep UCLA. And I said, aha! Okay, well, anyway, congratulations, and you deserve this honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, but before I begin, Mr. Reyes said, when he was a youngster, he used to take the bus, but he's still pretty young, with the exception of that beard, but he's still pretty young. Well, I just want to thank UCLA. I'm sure you found that a lot of students want to participate and be involved in their local communities. We just have to give them the platform by which to do that. And I know that your program here has been very, very successful. And I wanted also to recognize not only the volunteerism from the students, but certainly what the students are learning in the classroom often comes out in our communities. Recently, we engaged Professor Leo Estrada's graduate students to look at a quarter in Boe Heights in my district where we found an organic art district arising, and we asked them to look at that from an urban planning perspective, make recommendations on how we could continue to support this. They did a phenomenal job. Some students, even after they finished the class, are still involved with the project. And there we have a lot of support from these students to ensure that we continue to support these artists who are creating our artist district down 1st Street in Boe Heights. So thank you for that work as well, and UCLA is part of Los Angeles. I couldn't think of Los Angeles without UCLA. And thank you for what it did to many students like myself who gave us an opportunity as well. So thank you so much. And we support the volunteer program. Please let us know how the city of Los Angeles continues to support the volunteer program. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Give Mr. Weezer a big hand there for a man from Princeton. 1919, the University of California Southern Branch, originally on Vermont Avenue through 1929, moved to Westwood, Ed, to get away from the city. And then the city ran out to Westwood. But what a thought, though. Mr. Parks and I were talking about schools moments ago, with the design of the campus, with the great architecture, with the, all the beautiful buildings, educational institutes. But now, as Ed said, back in the community, which is so important. I'm proud to have had a great mentor in the late, great John Farrar. I'm very proud to have a mentor, the late, great Milt Davis, who was a Bruin and a tremendous Bruin who played for Coach Sanders. I'm excited about going to Griffith Park and all sites in the city. There's nothing like volunteering, and I know we've got champs that's going to be honored later on today. There's nothing like helping somebody else out, and that's what UCLA does. Congratulations. Go Bruins!
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corretts, and congratulations, UCLA. Thank you, Paul. Our next presentation will be Mr. Reyes. Mr. Jim Sealy, come on down. Mr. Sealy's coming up with members of his family. He's got a whole row of people with him. Mr. Jim Sealy with Mr. Ed Reyes. And Mrs. Jim Sealy.
And thank you, Council President. Colleagues, standing next to me is one of those individuals who is truly the unsung hero. He is our representative in Washington, DC. He is a gentleman who since Mayor Bradley has played a pivotal role in how this city grows, how it develops. He is our mentor, our steward when we are in DC. He plays an instrumental role in developing relationships with Congress members, senators, the administration, the presidential office. He is the gentleman that makes it happen for us in the East Coast. But I thought it would be very, very appropriate, and quite frankly, an honor, to take this position, to wish him happiness, prosperity, in his 50th wedding anniversary. And this certificate essentially shares those sentiments with him. It's been signed by every council member, as well as a congratulatory salutation to James F. Sealy and Joanne Browning Sealy. And I just wanted to thank him for all his hard work, and I was trying to find the best occasion, there couldn't be something better than this. So congratulations, Jim. Congratulations to your dear family. And I would love to have you come to the microphone and introduce your family and share a few words with us. Jim?
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmembers. I have with us about half of a family. We have Gabe and her wife, Tiana. We have Chris and his.
Jim, Jim, we can't hear you. Speak into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Gabe and her wife, Tiana, Chris and his three daughters, wife Joanne, I've already said, and Carrie. Carrie is a resident of Garcetti's district here. Chris came out from Virginia, and Gabe came down from San Francisco. The rest of them will join us tonight and tomorrow for, as I say, 50th wedding anniversary, which we're going to celebrate in Santa Monica because our roots go back to Los Angeles, even though we've been in Virginia for 45 years. Who's counting?
How many children do you have, total?
11. And 12 grandchildren going on 13, so we've got one.
13 going on 14.
13 going on 14.
You're losing count, you.
Anyway, as I told council members over the years, you know, it sort of takes a village, it was just everything to the fact that the city of Los Angeles has helped raise our family, and the support we've gotten from the members of this council. We have an interesting family, and you guys have all been characters who have appreciated that, and the mayors that we've served with have been wonderful. So we really owe a lot to you all and appreciate it, so it's a way for us to say thank you as well, as you saying thank you to us. So thank you very much, Ed. That was great.
We have Ms. Hahn. Ms. Hahn to speak.
Ms. Hahn is going to speak, but Mr. Reyes, you just honored one of the greatest families in America. There's nobody like Joanne and Jim Sealy. The beautiful pictures you get every year at the holiday time, the wonderful love. And Mr. Sealy, one time I was in Washington to try to get some money for the observatory and the renovation, and we went to 19 congressional offices, Mr. Wesson. No appointments. I saw nine congressional members and sat down with them to talk about the observatory and their needs, and they are helpful. There is nobody in the world like Jim Sealy, nobody in Washington like Jim Sealy, and I just heard Warner Brothers is coming out with a new picture. Mr. Sealy goes to Washington. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, Joanne. I just wanted to rise and congratulate the both of you on quite a milestone, your 50th anniversary. I think that's something that's remarkable these days. It's great to have your family here, and it's true, there's nothing more fun than walking the halls of Congress with Jim Sealy. Jim knows every back door, Jim knows every member of Congress. He's the dean of all lobbyists back in Washington, DC. You do not attempt to walk the halls of Congress without Jim leading the way, opening the doors, and making the introductions. It's really great. And Joanne, I believe you just retired from the CIA. I know I didn't blow your cover because we all, we knew you were working for the CIA. But you're a great couple, you're really the, you have the definition of the Washington, DC power couple, but you've kept your marriage together, you've kept your family together, and we are honored to wish you the best and congratulate you on all your success.
And I just want to offer my congratulations. When I was newly elected in 2001, my first trip to Washington, DC, Jim took me under his wing, he's asked all council members, and takes us around, and your lovely wife, who's now a PhD, so not only raising all these children, adopting children, taking care of the city of Los Angeles, you folks as a couple have done it so well. And I see Julie Butcher here from SEIU. Jim, maybe you can go back to DC and bring some money back so the unions can get what they want, because you've got the contacts with the federal government. Maybe you could take care of that for them. So congratulations to you for 50 beautiful years. Congratulations.
Okay, our next presentation will go to CD10.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Today, again, it's, well, twice a month I'm afforded the opportunity to have Pet Adoption Friday, Dog Adoption Friday. Today, I'm joined by Kyle here, who is a four-year-old Gindu Chihuahua mix. He's well-trained, and he's definitely looking for a home. Since we've done this program, we have a 100% adoption rate, and I'm also proud to mention that on the two Fridays that I don't try to get a dog adopted, Mr. Corretts is attempting to get a cat adopted. So if you ever want unconditional love, somebody, look at that face, look at that face, somebody that will be there, can count on you, and somebody that can't talk back to you, then I would highly recommend that you give us a call at 888-452-7381. Again, 888-452-7381. Now, we're gonna, we've been fortunate, and we as a city have been in competition with the county of Los Angeles for the past four years. They also have a 100% adoption rate, and they have a pet adoption on a weekly basis. A lot of the animals that have been elected here have been elected by members of the city family, and also members, individuals who come and visit us in the council chambers. So I'm going to ask you to kind of sway them around and see if we can get any takers for Kyle, and to alert everyone that we're going to keep Kyle around for a bit. So here, bring him over a little closer. So everybody that's watching on television, we're going to have Kyle here for at least another 45 minutes to an hour. So if you want, call or come down to the council chambers. And again, if you want some unconditional love, I got a good feeling that Kyle here will give it to you. If we don't adopt it, we will have to give this dog to Councilmember Parks. What about this one, Mr. Parks? He likes it right over here. Okay. So anyway, please, the number is 888-452-7381. His name is Kyle. He's four, he's got all of his shots, been neutered, been microchipped, and he will be in the back of the chambers for another 45 minutes to an hour. So I'm urging anybody that can see this, if you want Kyle, let's come give him a home and ensure that the city of Los Angeles keeps its 100% adoption rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Our next presentation, Mr. Weezer.
Good morning, colleagues in public. It's my pleasure today to be standing here next to two very special CD14 champions. The first is the Silesian High School volleyball team, and the other is the Rose Hills All-Star baseball team. Let's give them both a big round of applause. Both of these teams have made amazing strides in their respective sports. Both of these teams have made amazing strides in their respective sports and have truly made our communities very proud with their impressive seasons. This year, the Silesian Mustang volleyball team led an undefeated season in their league with 12 wins and no losses. Their hard work and commitment eventually earned them the title of Southern California CIF champions. This is a title that did not come easy for this young group of men. A majority of the players had never even stepped foot on a volleyball court until they attended Silesian High School. But with the support and leadership of their coaches, Elliot Walker, Wayne Tang, and assistant coaches Dion Jones and Raymond Rodriguez, they went on to become the champions that they are and achieve victory. Their story is truly a Cinderella story that garnered them some attention from David Wharton of the LA Times, who wrote that the squads, quote, "Court smarts and persistence make up for inexperience and a lack of height," and that their lessons extend off the court. This team certainly gave their blood, sweat, and tears, and all of that definitely paid off. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give the Silesian High School volleyball team another big round of applause.
Council members, thank you. These young men represent not only Silesian High School, but the Los Angeles community, many of whom are still members of our school. We have about eight graduates who are now attending college. I am fortunate to have two of my young men here today, Bernard Luna-
Raise his hand.
-and also Edgar Quiros. And we have other young men who are attending the colleges of University of Los Angeles, Concordia University, Cal State University LA, Cal State University Fullerton, and to name just a few, Boston University, so those men can be here today. And then of this squad, we have approximately eight of these young men who have returned to this year's team, who will also be going to our city colleges and major universities. So, not only are they champions on the volleyball court, but champions in their life education. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And there you have it. Where's Mr. Labange? Labange around? No? I was going to ask him where I went to high school. You asked everybody where people went to high school, and I went to Silesian High School, very proud alumni from Silesian High School. And colleagues, today as well, we have another championship team present, the Rose Hill All-Star Baseball Team is with us here today too. This very talented team of nine and 10-year-olds has brought a regional baseball championship title to the community of Rose Hill, a title that had eluded Rose Hill since 1997. Bringing the title home was not an easy task for these future major leaguers. They had to defeat several other parks in the area, the Alserino Rec, the Lincoln Park Rec, Mr. Reyes, the Normandy Rec, and where I played baseball, the Evergreen Rec Center. And today, we can all call them the Rose Hill Division All-Star Champions. These All-Stars are led by Coach Armando Figueroa, Assistant Coach Andrew Figuero, and Team Mom Gina Mesa. Where's Gina? Hi Gina. Both these teams are great examples of a hard work pays off. It's a lesson to all of us that when we take care of our young and provide them the resources to succeed, they go on to do that. Even when you have a high school such as Silesian High School, where many people would not expect a championship volleyball team to come from, or a Little League team like the one we see at Rose Hill, where they have been trying and trying to achieve a championship, they finally have done it. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them both a big round of applause, and if I could ask the coach of the Little League team to come up.
Thank you, councilmen. Thank you, council board, just to let you know, I did win at Cathedral High School. So, we're brothers there. These kids worked very hard. We practiced two hours in batting, pitching. We won. These kids play like champions. You go to my backyard, I got a banner that says, "Play like a champion both on and off the field." I have won the lottery with these kids, because it done so well. As parents, we got together and we took them to a baseball camp at Cal State LA, so they got to play baseball at a California State University, Cal State LA. It's a phenomenal thing for these kids. These kids do plan to go to college, and I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity for being here, Mr. Weezer. Rose Hill, thank you so much. Congratulations, Silesian.
Congratulations, Mr. Reyes, for comments.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment and thank Councilman Weezer for bringing in these young men. Colleagues, many of us understand our districts as elected officials, but what I share with Councilman Weezer is those challenges that deal with high levels of poverty, great amount of pressure due to lack of housing, lack of parks, and we have parents who work very hard for their children, are very hard to get their youngsters through Silesian, through Cathedral. It's great to see Silesian achieving those heights, because you will be inspiring other young folks, and they're going to be thinking about volleyball as a way to go to college. Other universities will now say, "Why not recruit from Silesian? Why not recruit from Cathedral? Why not recruit from the East Side?" You have set a standard, and I congratulate you because whether you realize it or not, you're opening doors for other young men in the future, and Silesian will be a feeder school for great volleyball colleges throughout the country, and you started that. So, congratulations to you and to our Cathedral alumni, our fellow fandom. Thank you for your leadership as a coach, as parents that are here, you're taking care of your children, your children now understand self-esteem, pride, and they can say that I was a champion from Rose Hills. So, congratulations, and keep doing it. Thank you.
Very well, congratulations, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and again, I encourage those who are interested in reading more about the Silesian volleyball team, pick up the LA Times article by Wharton. It, you know, if you read it, you think you're watching a movie about those teams that despite all obstacles, they persevered and showed that an East LA school can be champions. And along with these young boys here as well, it's showing that no matter where you come from, where you grew up, and obstacles you may face, all things are possible. Congratulations again, thank you very much.
Congratulations. Let's hear it for the winning teams. Our next presentation, Ms. Hahn.
a remarkable young woman who many of you might have already heard of. She's 15-year-old Kimberly Anyadike. And this July, Kimberly became the youngest African-American female to pilot a plane across the country. In a single-engine Cessna, she departed from Compton and arrived in Newport News, Virginia, 13 days later. And we're really excited to have, yeah, that deserves another round of applause. We're really proud to have 87-year-old Levi Thornhill, who's also here today, one of the Tuskegee Airmen, who accompanied Kimberly on the flight, along with a safety pilot. We are honored to have Mr. Thornhill here with us today as well. For apparently, for as long as Kimberly can remember, she's had a passion for airplanes and a dream to fly them. Kimberly's first taste of flying started with a 20-minute demo flight at tomorrow's Aeronautical Museum, a flight school and youth mentoring center in Compton. The museum was founded by Pilot Robin Pettgrave, who's here, who's one of my constituents, and who I've known for quite a while. Kimberly worked at the museum to earn her way to flight lessons. She was mentored and inspired by the heroic Tuskegee Airmen who volunteered to teach that program. Kimberly serves certainly as an inspiration, not only to young people everywhere, but to, I think, people of all ages and all walks of life. When I'm reading about your story, I think, wow, if you were able to, at 15, to accomplish such an incredible feat, it's proof that if you have passion, if you believe in yourself, if you have courage, anything is possible. So, I think that's a lesson for anybody to learn from you. Also joining Kimberly today are her proud mom and dad, Pamela and Charles, which, talk about courage. Man, I had a hard time letting my kids drive at 16, so the fact that you were able to let go and see Kimberly take this historic flight was, is a great testament to your belief in courage as well. Kimberly, I'm very pleased to present this certificate from the city of Los Angeles, honoring you on being the youngest African-American female to pilot an airplane transcontinentally. Your historic accomplishment in tribute to the Tuskegee Airmen is worthy of recognition. Congratulations. Kimberly, I'm going to ask you to say a few words, and I'd certainly like Mr. Thornhill to say a few words as well.
Well, I'd like to start off by thanking God for everything he's done for me and everything that he continues to do in all of our lives. I thank all of you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to acknowledge tomorrow's Aeronautical Museum, as well as my own accomplishments, and I'd like to say thanks for doing your part in keeping our state working great. And I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Hahn. I feel extremely blessed that years and years ago, Tuskegee Airmen, like, broke the barrier for African-Americans, and I also appreciate Robin so much because without his venue, who knows how many more kids would have gone astray. And because there's a place like tomorrow's Aeronautical Museum, I was able to see my dream through to the end, and so other kids like me can understand that when you have a dream, the sky is no longer the limit.
That's great. Thank you very much. Mr. Thornhill, would you like to say a few words?
She said it all.
She sure did.
The thing that was really amazing to me, sitting in behind her and watch her grow every minute. She is smooth, and that's great for a pilot. She knows what she's doing, and there were times that it got a little rough, but it didn't bother her at all. She just fought right on through it. And she's lucky, because she has two individuals standing behind her who have devoted their entire lives to propping her up and encouraging her on. Thank goodness for good parenting.
Thank you, Mr. Goodheart. Thank you very much, and again, it's great to have you here today. Your service to our country is certainly one that we will never forget, and we are pleased to honor you as well today. So, you were in World War II, and you were sitting behind her flying across the country. Which one was, you know, which one gave your heart, you know, a little stopping?
The difference between the two is the reason that your heart flooded. It flooded because you was scared in World War II, but this is because I was proud.
Oh, that's great, that's great, that's great. And Robin, my good friend, come here, because you are also certainly an inspiration to us. You reach these kids when they're young. Your program involves young people working their time so that they get flight lessons. You're all about mentoring, tutoring, after-school programs, everything we talk about in the city of keeping our kids on the right course, keeping them out of gang violence. You really are the epitome of one of our Angelenos who gets it and understands what it takes to give these kids positive choices. So, have a few words with us this morning.
Well, one of my reasons for being here and why I'm so proud to be here is to thank you. Long before the Honorable Councilwoman Janice Hahn was in politics, she used to be the outstanding citizen Janice Hahn, and years ago, herself and when her brother was city attorney, James Hahn, they flew in a helicopter with me into schools to talk to kids about their future. And we flew into the Home Depot Center on Kids' Day. We've flown into many youth-oriented activities, and it's your leadership that kind of inspired me, along with the Tuskegee Airmen, to build our program. We service over 800 kids that come from all over Los Angeles, and as far as ways, Lancaster, Palmdale, Corona, and it's because of this that we're able to have so many kids do some phenomenal things. Kimberly's sister Kelly set a world record just a year before, when she soloed four different types of airplanes on her 16th birthday. So, because we are able to introduce kids to aviation at such a young age, they start at the age of eight, we've had six kids set 12 world records, and it's all as a tribute to the Tuskegee Airmen because of their self-sacrifice, determination, and perseverance. It serves as an example for us that if you get kids involved in after-school activities, as you and your brother has preached for years, it's a natural alternative to self-destructive behavior that kids get into. So, because of your leadership, it inspires me to keep going. So, we're just starting, folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to everybody, and why don't we go in the back and we'll take some pictures?
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, for a great presentation. I'd like to introduce Councilmember Dennis Pizin.
I was just mentioning to Councilmember Hahn that I flew yesterday from Virginia to Los Angeles via Atlanta, and it was a big American Airlines plane, and there was a lady pilot that piloted this 757 plane, so competent pilots in the air. We have another celebration, this is an annual celebration, and the rabbi, and the rabbis will please join me. Chabad to life, telethon West Coast. The annual tradition continues here in Los Angeles, recognition for their dedicated service and commitment to reach others with their acts of kindness, and for assisting the needy regardless of their backgrounds and beliefs. And it's the dancing rabbi, Rabbi Kuhn, and I have danced with you at the telethon. I know you dance here in the council chambers, and Rabbi Kuhn with his other fellow rabbis, and he will introduce them in a moment. We are honoring and recognizing the annual tradition. West Coast Chabad, part of the largest Jewish organization in the world, with over 2,700 branches reaching around the globe, embraced the philosophy of study, meditation, social outreach, that combines vigorous academics and proactive community involvement. The rapidly growing array of educational, social services programs have made the West Coast the most dynamic forces in modern Jewish life. Chabad is a Hebrew acronym for wisdom, understanding, and knowledge. Founded the town in White Russia, where the movement was based for more than a century. Lubavitch?
Lubavitch.
Lubavitch, Lubavitch. All right, that's good, Rabbi, relax, relax, okay.
How could I relax? It's right before telethon.
But we're not going to dance yet, we're getting you prepared. Lubavitch means brotherly love. Love dedication and characterizes the Chabad and its representatives is founded in 1772. Many contribute to the extraordinary organization. There is one individual that has committed himself to the betterment of Chabad, his name is Rabbi Kuhn, who's here with us- His name is Rabbi Kuhn, who’s here with us. The director of the West Coast Chabad. He is sent to California in 1965 by the Rabbi Mohammed.
Rabbi Shluss, the Rebbe.
All right.
The Rebbe. You got it right.
The Rebbe. And he developed educational, religious, and social outreach programs. In 1980, after the West Coast headquarters was destroyed in a tragic fire that claimed the lives of three young men, Rabbi Kuhn had launched a first-ever Jewish telethon hosted by Carol O’Connor and Jan Murray. The overwhelming audience responded, not only generated the funds to rebuild, but prompted Chabad to continue the telethon, which has evolved into the organization’s biggest annual fundraising event. The annual telethon broadcast live on local television stations provides a source of revenue to educate, comfort, and give hope to countless people in need. And the Chabad to Life Telethon, for over 29 years, has featured political figures, film, television stars, musicians, athletes, committee leaders, broadcasts lives on television across the nation and on the internet around the world. Here today to recognize and commend the West Coast Chabad for their dedicated service and commitment to reach others with their acts of kindness and for assisting needy regardless of their background and beliefs, and for their yearly Jewish telethon, Chabad to Life, that has provided support for many. Your selfish acts are unmeasurable. Thank you. And, the plug, the Chabad to Life Telethon will be televised this coming Sunday, September 13th, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on KTLA Channel 5. I bring to you Rabbi Kuhn and the fellow rabbis, who he will now introduce, and then we will do the ceremonial dance.
We have a show for also here today.
You had the show, yeah, you had it.
Where is the show?
There we go, there we go. Thank you, Rabbi.
I want to thank you very much. I want to thank all of you wonderful people, all of you council people, all of Chabad council people, because we have a Chabad in all of your districts. Today is September 11th. And the answer to September 11th, and they can hear me without the microphone.
Television though.
Television, television. Today, the answer to September 11th is my youngest son-in-law, Rabbi Menachem Grossbaum of Chabad of South Westwood, next to the youngest son-in-law, Rabbi Chaim Telshewski, Chabad on Montana, not in the state of Montana, and Rabbi Yankabaitle, my third of the youngest son-in-laws that join us today. Because as long as there are young people dedicated and devoted, ain’t nobody going to be able to put out our lights. They could try, but they ain’t going to be able to do it. And this wonderful, wonderful partnership since 1965, and the first Chabad house in the world was built at UCLA. Our partnership is what enables us to make this world a better world. And without your help, all of you, and as I said earlier, sure, we got to worry about the cats and the dogs, it’s a big mitzvah, the Torah says, but you got to worry about the kids and the NIMBY, not in my backyard. Oh, yes, it’s great to help the kids, but let’s build an island outside of L.A. We’ll have ships going out there. It’s your understanding, your cooperation with Chabad that makes the difference. And since Rosh Hashanah is coming, a week from tonight, number one will sound the show. Where are you, where are all the council people? You got to get up to dance. Where are you, Parks, LeBarnes, Kerets? Who’s our Wesson, our new school on La Cienega? Let’s do it, folks! A healthy and a happy New Year, and God bless America on this day of September 11th. God bless the greatest state in the union, California, and God bless the greatest city of America, the proud city of L.A. And God bless you all.
Thank you, Rabbi. Before the dance begins. Councilman Zahn, we had Councilmember Kerets and Wesson on the queue. We have, thank you, Rabbi, we do have two councilmembers on the queue. I’d like to call on Councilmember Kerets and then Councilmember Wesson.
I just want to say, I look forward to the Chabad telethon, and Chabad does so much good, certainly in our city, but all over the world. And I go back with Chabad to the time I was, years ago, in the West Hollywood City Council. They did so much good with their Chabad synagogue that served the Russian community, which had had no exposure to their Jewish religion before they came to this country and were able to receive that through Chabad, and all the great work they did back when I was at UCLA. You almost don’t know where to start to talk about all the great things that this organization does for children, for so many people in need all over the world. So I’m glad that we’re here to recognize them, and I wish you the best of luck with the terrific telethon this weekend.
You’re all invited to come and dance with us, KCT, from 5:00 to 11:00.
Councilmember Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. You know, this is why no one can say no to this man. You have so much energy and so much love. I remember when I met you when we were discussing the school on La Cienega. You know, within five minutes, I had agreed to everything. And when you shake his hand and you hug him, I mean, you are very, very strong. And personally, though, whenever I see you, I do think about singing and dancing. Whenever I feel like singing, what’s the fiddler on the roof? If I were a rich man, when I look at you, I get inspired by that. But thank you for all of the work that you’ve done, all of the young people that you have taught, because they will be tomorrow’s leaders, so your dream will continue in them. So thank you, and you’re a pretty good dancer.
We’ll find out Sunday night.
Oh, you’re pretty good. Thank you, Rabbi.
God bless you.
Thank you very much.
A happy New Year to all.
Councilman Zahn.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, thank you colleagues. So we can now do the official dance, Rabbi.
I thought we were dancing already before.
Well, we did, but they wanted to speak, so now we go back to, now we do the second thing.
Ah, I see. Well, it’s always good to keep dancing.
Keep dancing. Here we go.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Rabbi. Thank Councilman Zahn. Next, I’d like to call up Councilman Weisar for his next presentation on behalf of Councilman
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And here you go, Mr. Zahn, don’t forget this, very important, and don’t forget this. There you go. Thank you. And colleagues, I’m pinch-hitting today for our colleague, Councilmember Richard Alakon, who is at a funeral, I understand, and is on his way here today. But I wanted to be part of this presentation as well because of the tremendous work that is done by our American Red Cross. And they have a program that has been doing wonderful things in our community. It’s called the Teaching Tots Disaster Preparedness Skills Program. And this recognition is especially relevant because of the day and the month that we are in. As you know, today is September 11th, and we remember the men and women who lost their lives on this day. And this month is also National Disaster Preparedness Month, along with the National Day of Service and Remembrance that we have been celebrating. And to tell a little bit about this program, it teaches preschoolers about disaster preparedness, and volunteers from the Red Cross go out, and they have found that nothing works better than using Sesame Street puppets. And let me tell you, as a father of some young children, I know that’s very, very true. My 18-month-old could sit looking at their program for longer than anything else that could grab his attention. And I will let them tell you a little bit more about the program, but I did want to recognize today some of the individuals who have made this possible. And first, I’d like to introduce Paul Schultz. He is the Los Angeles Region CEO for the American Red Cross. And let me present to you, on behalf of Richard Alakon, a certificate of recognition for your leadership and for not only this program, but all the wonderful work that the American Red Cross does. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your work. I’d love to.
Thank you very much, Councilmen. The mission of the Red Cross is all about preparing and responding to emergencies and disasters. Many of you have seen the wildfire disasters that we faced over these past couple of weeks, and I’m very proud of the seven shelters that the American Red Cross helped open and run, and the care that was given to many of your constituents and other constituents around the county. We also know that in addition to responding, preparedness is critical, and there’s no better time to start preparedness than with our kids, as you said. And they bring that message to the home, to their family, as well as keeping it for a lifetime. So we’re so pleased that we have this program. And Erica Helsin actually runs the program and our youth programs in Red Cross, so I would love it if Erica could speak for a brief minute.
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Erica. I’m the Youth Services Coordinator. So Nikta, Nikta’s one of our high school students. We pulled her out of school today to be honored because Nikta was at nearly every single one of our puppet shows this summer. We reached about 700-plus children and parents this summer through our puppet show. So it takes about five of us to perform, and we brought some of our friends today. So like the councilmember said, if you have young children, you know that when the kids see Elmo and Big Bird, he is their star. So they will listen to whatever they say. So we can take a somewhat dry subject like disaster preparedness, and we can make it fun. And so the puppets sing to them, they tell them to go to a safety spot during an earthquake, they tell them to stop, drop, and roll when they’re, if they were to catch on fire. So using songs and using the puppets, we can take a scary subject and make it accessible and help the children remember how to respond during an emergency.
Thank you. Where are those puppets there?
And I brought some of our brochures. When we give the puppet shows, then we also reach out to the parents, and we pass out these brochures. We have them in about every language, and they talk about how to build a disaster kit and how to make a family plan. So it’s important that the kids know what to do in the actual moment of the emergency, but it’s also important for the parents to prepare. They need to build a disaster kit, they need to have family meeting places, so we’re able to reach the parents as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I know our city has been doing a lot of work in this area, and certainly we could invite the American Red Cross to go out and help us with this, because certainly, as you said, our children probably listen more to these puppets than they do an adult standing up there talking to them. So Erica Helsin, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and Councilmember Richard Alakon, thank you so much for your work and all the time and effort you put into this program. Let’s give her a big round of applause, please.
Mr. Weisar, we have Mr. Cardenas for comments.
Okay. We also have to Nikta Jabberzadeh, and you said he went to Palisades Charter High School. Let’s give her a big round of applause for the work she’s done for this program. Thank you so much. And we’ll hear from some councilmembers at this time, and I also want to introduce right after that Jeff Sakaguchi, who’s with us today. He’s the chairman of the board for the American Red Cross here in greater Los Angeles.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. I’d like to also thank the Red Cross for the diligent and critical service that has been rendered to this country and around the world for many, many, many decades. But I think it’s important for people to understand maybe some basic answers. If there is a fire, if there is an earthquake, if somebody happens to be put out of their home or what have you, and they’re going to need to utilize one of these services, what is the simplest, especially in this very difficult moment in their life, the very difficult time, to think straight or what have you? What’s the simplest way in which they can find out where the nearest shelter is in those times? What’s the simplest way for them to find out?
The shelters will open based on where the first responders tell us to open those shelters. So you can’t say in advance where the shelter is going to be opened, because you don’t know where the disaster is. Once we determine where a shelter will be opened, which is very much a joint effort with sheriff, with fire, with the emergency department, Jim Featherstone’s team if it’s in the city of L.A., we come up with that joint decision, and then we start to broadcast that information at the evacuation zone. We give it to the media in media alerts, because a lot of people will hear about it on radio or they’ll see it on TV. And we really do an extensive outreach program at that time to get people there. But where it really starts is with the first responders who are evacuating people, and the first responders know where the evacuation center or the shelter is, that they want to direct people. Because as they evacuate them, they’re directing them to a certain location. Does that help?
Yes, it helps, but at the same time, unfortunately, we’ve become so modern and so used to communicating by internet, it might, it’s obvious that if somebody is not able to go back into their home or something like that, maybe they don’t have such good access to the internet or what have you to find out where the sites are, which I’m sure there’s a way to access that by then, as you described. But say if they’re lucky to have their cellphone with them, and they have their children in the car, and they want to go somewhere, what is the, should they just call 3-1-1? Should they just stop by their nearest police station or fire station? And if one of those officers or firefighters are there, they’re very likely going to be able to communicate that to the family?
Absolutely. You’re different, all those different options will work. 2-1-1 is a terrific number to call. 2-1-1 for information. But also, your police or fire station in your area would absolutely know where to go. And any first responder, police, sheriff, fire department, would absolutely know how to get that information, because they would have been, as part of the call, figuring out where does this, where do the folks in this evacuation go? So it’s getting a hold of a first responder or getting on the cellphone to a 2-1-1. Absolutely. There’s not a central number that we have every time that you can call. If it’s a big enough disaster, you would call 1-800-RED-CROSS. But for a smaller disaster, that information is given locally.
Okay. So 2-1-1 is where someone should call, and they will, hopefully by that time, things will have been set up, and they can tell them the address of the actual shelter nearest them.
Yes.
And then if not, they can, they can stop by a firehouse or a police department or what have you. And I’m sure that as soon as they say, I have my family with me, we just been displaced because of the fire or the earthquake, that within a minute or two, whoever they’re talking to is going to get that information.
Absolutely. And as we saw during these wildfires, as people are being evacuated, the number of fire and sheriff and police in the area is wonderfully overwhelming. So you have the ability right there to ask any of them, where should we evacuate to? And what they have been told is, you know, so I was told to evacuate in La Cañada. It was well-known for the first responders that you can go to La Cañada High School, either evacuation or for a shelter.
Now, my last question is this. The Red Cross doesn’t have a permanent sign on these shelters.
Correct.
Because they’re temporary.
Correct.
Do they put up a big banner out front or something like that, so that if somebody happens to be driving by and they are displaced, they can just pull in?
Yes, we have signage that we put up, that we have in a kit, that we would put up around any shelter location to know as you get close to that, often a school, that this is where you go. So it’s signage that comes to typically that school to let people know where to go.
Okay. Thank you very much, and you do wonderful work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And finally, I wanted to introduce to everyone Jeff Sakaguchi, who is the chairman of the board for the American Red Cross of greater Los Angeles. And I wanted to present to him a certificate of recognition on behalf of the city council and Councilmember Alakon for the Teaching Tots Disaster Preparedness Skills Program. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I’ll be very brief. I first want to thank the council for recognizing the activities of the programs that we have to help get people of L.A. prepared. I want to thank the councilmembers’ interest and their focus on ensuring that we continue to provide a high level of service to the community. One thing that Councilman Cardenas didn’t ask about was, in many cases, we serve more than 400 individual family disasters every day, I mean, every year, I’m sorry. So a little more than one every day. And those include apartment fires, house fires, other ways that people are displaced from their homes. And in those cases... And in those cases, just like we would in the big disasters, we have representation from the Red Cross. They help send those people to shelters if they need to, or to alternative arrangements, housing arrangements as they're needed. We try to keep a very positive and visible face to the community and to people who are victims of those disasters, so that we can help them adapt as quickly as possible and get back to the life that they deserve. So, I want to thank the council again, and again, thank to our great programs here. We're very proud, as a board of directors, working with this particular chapter, that of the work and the progress that they have accomplished over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And finally, Mr. Alakon, I wanted to express to all of you that if any of you are interested in having this program in your district, please contact the American Red Cross. I know, and we all know, that several of our council members often have natural disaster preparedness programs in their districts, and this would be a great way to reach out to the children in our districts. Thank you very much, and thank you to the American Red Cross. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Congratulations, and thank you. Okay, that concludes our presentations for today. Mr. Clerk, if you will please continue with the agenda. Next item.
First order business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items one through seven are items for which public hearings have been held. Item one is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please.
That would leave items two through seven.
Two through seven, any specials on two to seven? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Items eight through 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There is a request on item nine to continue that matter to October 16th.
Without opposition, continue nine. Mr. Rosendahl has a question on eight. Call eight special.
And, Mr. President, there is another request to continue item 12 to September 25th.
Without opposition, continue number 12.
And on item 15, there is a technical amendment to have the funds transferred from the unappropriated balance as opposed to the reserve fund.
That will be the directive.
And there are cards on the, in that section.
We will call those special.
That's items 10, 11, 13, and 14, which leaves council item 15.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 16 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Has been held?
Has been held.
Okay, Mr. Weisar.
Can we call, are you on six?
We're on 16 special.
Can we call that special, please? We have an amendment to introduce.
Very well, special. That will be called special.
Mr. President, that would conclude the items called special in the regular meeting. Do you wish to recess the regular and go into the special meeting?
Yes.
Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Weisa, Corretts, Labons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
Proceed, please.
First items on the agenda, items 17 and 18 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Any special? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you.
Next items, items 19 and 20 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Item 19 is confirmation of the fire chief, and there is a card on 20. Do you wish to call those both special?
Yes.
That would take care of those items. Do you wish to go back to the regular or take up these items right now?
Let's take these items up now. Well, wait, missed, no, let's close that, we're going to go back to the regular. We have some other items we want to move forward.
Recess the special, go back to the regular?
Yes. We're going to go back. There was a matter, item one.
Item one is a commission appointment, the appointment of Ms. Marlene Cantor to the City Ethics Commission. This was waived out of the Rules Committee inasmuch as they did not meet on Wednesday, so a public hearing is required.
All right, so we'll have Ms. Cantor come forward.
And there are cards on the items.
And there are cards on number one.
I know, I know.
Marlene Cantor.
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
On this matter, Mr. Labons.
Members, this is a great individual who's civically minded, was a great member of the Board of Education, was a great president of the Board of Education, over 100 years it took, but finally, this board member got lights for the football stadium, Mr. Wesson, at Hollywood High. And tonight, for the first time, the sheiks of Hollywood High will pay under the lights. You're going to be notified, I believe, the 29th, and they're going to coordinate with your schedule when, with Mr. Garcetti, we all get out together, but you made that happen. But ethically, it's what this is, the Ethics Commission.
Yes.
I know I started with football, but ethically, you have those values. You have those values about doing absolutely what is right. So, I can't think of anyone else who would do an excellent job for the people independently than Marlene Cantor, and I'm honored to support you 1,000 percent. Thank you, Marlene Cantor.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. On public comment, we have Arnold Sachs, and following that will be Zuma Dog.
Good morning, thank you. I don't know if you happened by any chance to catch Wednesday's meeting regarding the ridiculousness of this living wage ordinance, so all I have to say to you is, ethics in this city council, what a lie, what a sham, what a, what a bunch of, what a crap sandwich. How can you, how can you even think ethically that this city council has any, any, I don't know, any iota of ethics after the way they acted on this, on this living wage ordinance to...
I do not believe he's talking about the Ethics Commission nominee.
I agree. Mr. Sachs, either direct your comments to the subject, or you'll, time will be over. We're talking about a commissioner for the commission. You're talking about something totally remote.
And they initiate ethics for the city council and the city as a whole, and for you to be able to sit here after listening to what happened on Wednesday, to consider that this city has any kind of ethics at all, is a sham and a force.
Thank you. Zuma Dog.
Yes, is that Marlene Cantor? I can't see her from here. Hi, Marlene. I like Marlene Cantor, L.A. U.S.D. She was so good that she couldn't even be on the board anymore, and the mayor pushed her off. So, I'm glad to see her land on her feet. Ethics, I feel good about her, but I'd like to say we have a huge problem in the city with ethics. And the problem is, and by the way, I'm speaking as a city council candidate for CD2, I'm here to say you cannot mandate ethics. That's the problem. There's always loopholes, there's always a kickback, there's always an independent expenditure, there's always a way around it, and these people have the top geniuses trying to figure it out. So, that's why I appreciate it when one of the council members said, "Well, Zuma Dog, you must be a genius, you're the one figuring out all this stuff." So, again, I'm here to implore city council, as we face an election where the grassroots candidate, Zuma Dog, seems to be a real threat to be walking into this seat, it's because they want more ethics. And you can't mandate it, and you can't require it, so you better start doing it, because I'm coming there on Tuesday, September 22nd, and it'll be a clear message. Thank you, Marlene.
All right, matters, oh, Mr. Weisar and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cantor, I thoroughly enjoyed serving with you on the Board of Education. We both arrived at the same time, and I think you and I did some great work there to strengthen the Ethics Office that was there in name only, but we gave it the resources to do its job. We provided additional regulations to enforce where in the past had been very little regulations to enforce. And finally, you're a big supporter of my proposal at the time to establish a lobbyist registration system that the district did not have before that. But what I like about this appointment, and I want to thank our council president, Eric Garcetti, for this foresight, is that you bring with your wealth of experience to the Ethics Commission from the school district, and given Measure L that now establishes ethics rules for campaigning for school board members, it is going to be great to have someone like yourself who knows that system to be able to work with the city officials to enforce those new regulations, and I think your insight is going to be really valued there. Unfortunately, we haven't given the Ethics Office the resources, in my view, to really look at this more intently. They are overstretched, but I think you would be a great help there to help them understand when those issues come up, what the school board is, how it functions, and believe me, very few people in this city, even city leadership, have a very little understanding of how the school district actually functions internally and its governance structure, and we often talk about building relations. You, serving here, is going to serve us all well by your insight. So, thank you for your willingness to serve, and thank you for the work you did on the school board. We know it's tough, but you did a great job there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I've had the pleasure of working with you in a partnership relationship with the 11th District, the Coastal District, and your office on the school board. We love you in the 11th District. You truly have been a partner with schools and kids and community. A lot of the tree plantings, a lot of the mixed-use concepts, and a lot of the community outreach. You're terrific.
Thank you.
Why do you want to go on this commission?
It's a good question. I'm glad you asked it. When Council President Garcetti called me and asked me if I would be, if I would be an appointee to this commission, it didn't take me a second to say yes, because ethics really drives everything I've done. It's part of who I am, it's part of my background. I also know from my eight years in office what a critical role it plays in the day-to-day life of elected officials and of the constituents that you represent, and so for me, it was an honor to be asked to be on the Ethics Commission.
And going on the commission, there's a lot of concern. I know former commissioners feel it's dysfunctional, they think it's caught up in minutia rather than in the real realities. Others have said it's created cottage industries of lawyers that advise us as elected officials how to work within the framework of nothingness, confusion. What will you, what is your sense of the present commission, and what kind of reforms, in your mind, do you think we need to look at? I know you have to do your homework and study it, but just from the gut, how do you feel about that?
Well, I'm going to look at this role the same way I looked at my school board role, which is to evaluate what the commission is doing and help raise it to the highest level, and I'm hopeful that my participation can do that. I know there's been a lot of criticism, as there is of lots of commissions and organizations, but I hope to be able to do my part to bring to it a thorough look and education for all of what ethics is and how we can best abide by them.
One of my dreams would be what I call clean money, which is I frankly want to take money out of the political process. I think taxpayers should pay for that process and not the special interests. Unfortunately, the special interests have interests, and frankly, they're the ones who step to the plate. And in our city, at this level, it happens to be developers more than anybody else. On the federal level, you see the insanity going on about health care, where the insurance companies and the drug companies have a thousand lobbyists walk in those halls for their profit motive. I want to get rid of that aspect of government, if we could do it. Do you sense that there's an opportunity with your leadership so that we can get this money thing behind us, so that politicians are appreciated as public servants?
You know, I think it's really an important issue, and you know, I ran independently, and not everyone is able to do that. And so, for me, it's really a critical point that I want to look into, to make sure that everybody that runs for office can run in a way that they're unbeholden, or perception is that they're unbeholden to anybody. So, I'm going to be working very hard on that.
Yeah, well, whatever I can do to help you on that, because we know how perception becomes reality.
Absolutely.
We know that incumbents are automatically in this town reelected unless there's some scandal of insanity that hits them, and it all has to do with money. But my other frustration is the intricacy and complexities of some of the laws are more caught up in that kind of dynamic than it is true reform.
I'm going to be looking into that. All of those issues are really important to me, and actually, the complexity of the laws and the ability for the public to better understand them is really also important to me, not only here, but in the school district when it comes to the education laws and everything else. So, I'm hopeful that I can be helpful in that area as well.
Well, I want to thank you very much, first, for what you did on the school board all those years, and I really appreciate you going on this commission. It's wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I look forward to it.
Very well. That matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I look forward to it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item, please.
Item eight was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, number eight.
And there are cards on that.
Number eight. Mr. Rosendahl? Number eight.
It's, it's, may I...
Now, we have one public comment card. Would you wish to hear from the public?
Is 17 and eight the same? I just, there's a little confusion here.
It's just 17. It's B.R.
Okay, what we're talking about is the stimulus money for cars and campers and the wraparound services. Is that in eight or is that in 17?
It's 17.
Is that in 17? Okay, I apologize, it was 17 that I...
Okay, so you don't need number eight.
Yeah.
All right, we have a public comment card, number eight. Zuma Dog, number eight.
Yes, and I'd always like to spend one minute when we're talking about federal stimulus money. First of all, to the people watching, my name's David Salzburg, also known as Zuma Dog, and I'm speaking as a candidate for Los Angeles City Council in the election, September 22nd. And I like to say, as council member, I will always press the button to warn that this is money from Obama. It's the most precious money in the country, and it's used to stimulate the economy, and here's how it's supposed to be used. It's not supposed to be used to cover up your messes of the deals you've made with unions that you weren't allowed to deliver on because you didn't get Measure B through, and now you're caught with your pants down, and you got to take Obama's stimulus money and spread the wealth around the people that you need to spread it around. I'm here to say this is money for shovel-ready jobs, not for paying city employees, unfortunately, not so the Americans say, "Well, let's have some project, and we'll put city employees on it, and that's how we'll stimulate jobs." It's for the private sector, and I'm out of time. More coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. That matter is now before us.
Mr. President, there is no action required on this today.
Okay. So, we take the next item. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I apologize, I'd like to reconsider 17. That was the one I wanted to tap.
Mr. President, that was in the special meeting, so we would have to recess the regular, go back to the special.
We'll get to that eventually.
Great. Look forward to that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do that appropriate time. All right, so that was going to be received and filed?
It's no action.
No action? Next item, please.
Item 10 called special for cards.
Number 10. Zuma Dog, again.
Yes, yes, and I'm sorry to be the council member dominating the meeting, but the people should know that it is city council who is sitting there not speaking out on these things, and it's rent escrow. And I'm here to tell you, as city council member, I would be sticking up for the mom-and-pop business owners and for the people that run the apartments and provide shelter for the tenants. I'm on their side. The REIT program is a vindictive retaliatory corrupt racket that they use against the mom-and-pop building owners of the city who are providing housing, so that they just tack on all these fines and fees until the owner can no longer comply, and then the council member hands it over to the preferred developer, they flip it into million-dollar condos, and let's just look downtown. A thousand luxury units are now online, vacant, foreclosing. units are now online, vacant, foreclosing. Morello Maddox declaring bankruptcy. And so I'm here to tell you, you better start, okay, first of all, you need to consider we're going to have a lot of affordable housing downtown. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Louis. Please call him.
Go ahead.
No, that's not the way it works. That's not the way it works. You've had your comments. Thank you very much. Well, that's not the way it works. We don't have a card from Mr. Louis, so that matter is now before us. Mr. Clerk? That was the only comment card we had. On that matter, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item eleven, called special for cards.
Number eleven.
Acting President, Council, thanks for my time. Number AB SB 435. You guys are going to vote today to support that. It's got numbers that are pulled out of thin air. I represent ironworkers in Los Angeles. I represent motorcycle riders in Los Angeles. And SB 435, Ms. Pavly has already come out publicly and stated that she's going to make amendments, she's going to change the bill around. So if you're here today to put a resolution together to support that, by the time it makes it to a bill, it could be something completely different. The numbers that come out are just like Floydian numbers, because we all know how Dick Floyd took numbers, make them whatever he wanted, and used them against the motorcycle community. And I would really appreciate you folks looking long and hard at this today, and just stay out of it. I mean, as far as city councils go, you guys are the biggest. Across the state, people look at you guys. If you pass a resolution to back something that's not even going to be the same by the time the state sees it, it just wouldn't look good. And I'm not running for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Lee Milligan.
Speaker Lee Milligan, on behalf of the Bay of California Board Member, and I'm asking you guys to not support this amendment, because, number one, if you look in your thing, it says there's no financial impact statement. It was not submitted by the author of the bill. And at this time, with the economics being as such they are in the state of California, how can anybody implement new programs without at least having a cost analysis? Number two, the amount of, California, by and large, has the strongest, most stringent motorcycle smog laws for brand-new motorcycles in the United States of America, you know, in California. Number three, this bill is not, was poorly written, and it's not something that we shouldn't be wasting our time on. There's better things we can spend our money on besides the amount of pollutants that motorcycles contribute to the air. It's relatively insignificant the amount of cost efficiency it's going to have. If you will probably hear in some of the statements when this goes further, there's a couple of states and counties in Arizona, our neighboring state, that have tried to use motorcycles, smog programs, and they failed miserably. If you cost analysis and implication of this, at this particular time, this program doesn't even have a way to tell you exactly how it's going to be implemented. So it's up to who knows who. It's going to be, so I'm urging you guys in the council to think about the effective cause and effect this will have on Los Angeles County and the Los Angeles City motorcycle riders by having that implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Nikla, or Wickla? Ilikwala or Nikla? Depends if it's a W or an N.
Bill, we have the public comment. We're going to break into the public comment. My name is Jim Nikla, and I'm here to oppose your support of SB 435. Not only is it not a smog bill, it is designed to do everything but clean the air. The proposal by Senator Paul Vee had a lot of background information, but no one will stand and tell you exactly what her intentions are in passing this or trying to get it passed. I can tell you that aftermarket companies will not manufacture parts that have to be stamped by EPA, because for each testing motorcycle, that aftermarket product has to be tested on that vehicle before it can be certified as an EPA item. Currently, there are no companies that are making catalytic converters for motorcycles, only the manufacturers. The problem with that is that without aftermarket items, older bikes will not have replacement parts available to them in the future. This bill doesn't have any word, doesn't even address these types of issues. Already, the manufacturers have met and exceeded all the responsibilities that were requested of them by the EPA to meet the current standards that go, especially here in California. The continuation of this bill doesn't serve any purpose, and if you look at our budgets on state, county, and city items, you know, the expenses that this is going to incur don't even come close to being addressed. And at a time when we're already expenditures millions of dollars, you know, with unknown items like this water main break and that, it doesn't make any sense to waste money on something that no one can tell you what it does or how it's going to improve the air.
Thank you. Our final speaker on this matter is Fred Satil.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm here to oppose Senate Bill 435, and interestingly enough... Do I have anybody's attention?
Sir, go ahead. The time is marching, and the people are listening.
Interestingly enough, I'm here to represent exactly 59 people. I spoke to 59 people yesterday. You usually don't know how many people you speak to in a day, but yesterday I spoke to 59. Fifty-eight of them signed a petition to oppose this bill. One of them said, "I really don't care." So that's the 59th. But the speakers who spoke before me all... They all stated the case very well. There's no need to repeat what they said. But by and large, people do not want this. They want to personalize their cars. They want to personalize their motorcycles. They want to have this part of America that we've always had. It's a tremendous part of our heritage, the love affair with the car and the love affair with the motorcycle. This bill seeks to destroy that, and it's not right. So on behalf of myself and these folks, you really shouldn't support the continuation of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Did you have something you want to say?
Yes, I'd like to address this particular matter. I'm the only council member that rides a motorcycle, and I think this bill is not only going to do a disservice to the motorcycle riders, but it's going to create a major hardship. It's unnecessary. It's being promoted as something to save the planet. It's not going to do anything to save anything. It's a bill that's simply going to charge motorcycle riders the cost, and we know the cost. If you get your car smog checked every two years, what that is, about $50 additional fee. You don't see motorcycles smoking. You don't see motorcycles that are causing pollution in the environment. So I think this bill is a foolish bill. It's a bill that's not going to solve anything. It's just going to take more money out of the taxpayers' pockets. And I find it interesting today, I just paid my car registration for a 2003 vehicle, $419. This will simply add more money to our consumers, who are already hard-pressed to pay their bills. So I would urge my colleagues, who are not motorcycle riders, to understand the need of a motorcycle to travel, not only for recreation but for business. And I would urge a no vote on this particular measure, a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you much, Mr. Zein. But they are loud.
This is not about the sound of the motorcycle. This is about a smog check. This has had nothing to do with the sound. There's already laws regulating the sound of a motorcycle. This simply has to do with the alleged pollution of a motorcycle. The next thing will be smog check for your lawnmowers, and it's absolutely ridiculous to go into that arena.
Thank you much. Mr. Zein, what are we doing, Mr. Clerk? Oh, Mr. Labons, we have you on the queue.
Yeah, thank you very much. Did the AQMD review this at all? You know, Mr. Zein, if you've been tracking this, as I know Ms. Perry is on the AQMD board, and I wonder if we should continue this, just to see what it piggyback.
Well, if we can't vote no, I would request that we continue it. But from my knowledge, this is not going to do anything to clear the skies of California. I don't know what the AQMD has done on this particular measure.
But you think we should at least inquire, because that's the governing board?
If we can't vote no today, then I would ask that we continue it, to get the information from AQMD and whatever research they have on the matter.
Because we're really taking your word as a motorcycle rider, which is important, as opposed to what those who are the, those who study the air quality of the five-county precincts...
Mr. Labons, would you like to make a message, a motion to continue it? Would you feel better if we got that?
Make a motion to continue. I'll second.
Where's the CLA? Let me have the CLA to come to the table.
If you want to make a motion to continue, I'd be happy to second that.
Mr. Wickham, what's the AQMD feel about this?
I don't have information on AQMD. There has been some studies by the California Air Resources Board on the subject matter. Their studies indicate that 10% of passenger vehicle, you know, I'll look that up for you.
Let's continue this matter. There's more research.
I wanted to stand with you, Mr. Zein, because I know there's another issue on vehicles that do farming, vehicles that do road construction that impedes the ability to build California if there's severe restrictions. There's a challenge that we have here. Would it be worthy for us to lay it over to Tuesday and maybe...
Yes. Yes. Why don't we, members, without objection, why don't we continue this?
Thank you.
And although Tuesday, I understand we have only one item on that agenda, so we would have to continue it, and then we're in recess, so we would have to continue it until the next Tuesday.
That's fine.
Which would be the 22nd.
What about the state Sacramento? Are they going to act quickly, or are we...
No, this...
Well, it failed in one of the houses in Sacramento.
Sacramento acting quickly?
This bill is currently in the Transportation Committee, so it's not going to pass out of the legislature today, so you've got time.
Mr. Zein, will you explain to the public speakers what we're doing so they have an understanding?
What we're doing to the folks that are here on this particular matter, we're going to continue this matter for additional research. The mood of the council, we need additional information, so we're going to continue this matter. We're not going to take a yea or a nay vote on it today, but it will be continued to a further date, and we'll do additional research on it.
Would council like to do that to Tuesday, the 22nd?
That'll be fine.
Yes. Why don't we do that, members?
Thank you.
Continue that till the 22nd. I understand we have the recommendation from the mayors for the next fire chief. We have Milage Peaks in the audience. Shall we move to that item? I believe it's 19.
And Madam President, that is in the special meeting, so would council like to recess the regular and go into the special?
I think it would be appropriate. This is a very important appointment, and I believe it would be appropriate to adjourn this meeting and then go into the special meeting.
Council would actually be recessing the regular and going into the special.
Okay. Why don't we do that?
And that is item 19, and that is the mayor's appointment of Milage Peaks as the permanent chief of the Los Angeles Fire Department. And there are cards on that matter.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we hear from the public on this item first, and then we'll bring the chief forward to be addressed by the city council. I have Mrs. Chris Mattson on this item. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Chris Mattson. My husband worked for the Los Angeles City Fire Department for 30 years. Our oldest son works at Fire Station 3 nearby. I'm here today to respectfully ask you to vote no to appoint Milage Peaks as permanent fire chief for the LAFD. In 2004, Chief Peaks was the operations executive officer responsible for initiating and coordinating disciplinary investigations, including the Tenny Pierce case. It was also during that time that Chief Peaks accused our youngest son and two other firefighter recruits in a written report of having a certain blood alcohol content and recommended their discharge, even though the recruit's blood alcohol content was not determined. Chief Peaks knew, or should have known, that the laboratory the LAFD sends urine samples to does not determine blood alcohol content by running urine samples, and that the first boy urine test for alcohol the LAFD administers is not an indicator of impairment according to the legal system, the scientific community, the California Code of Regulations, Department of Health Services, Department of Justice, the LAPD, or the Personnel Department's citywide policy for employees. The three recruits filed a lawsuit in 2005. A federal judge upheld their lawsuit, and a jury trial is scheduled for March 2010. I've been writing letters and giving public comment about this issue for five years, because the LAFD's substance abuse policy remains a continuing litigation risk. Of all the qualified candidates who applied for the job, why did the mayor nominate Milage Peaks to be the new LAFD's fire chief? It's a travesty of justice when gross mismanagement is rewarded. Please vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Arnold Sacks. Mr. Arnold Sacks.
That's some pretty outstanding commentary to follow up, but I would like to know from this new fire chief, if he is selected, his plans for addressing the overtime situation within the fire department. Somebody, and I doubt very much this city council has the backbone to do it, but somebody within this city needs to address the constant, every-year blood-sucking overtime that occurs in the departments that serve the public. I'd like to know his plan. I'd like to know if he has a two-year plan, a three-year plan, a four-year plan. And then, as a matter of his benefits that was stated in this address, I'd like to know if and when some of these appointees to the city department heads will become eligible for the living-killing wage ordinance that you so vicious, so appropriately find necessary for the poorly-paid people in the city, why not for the highest-paid people in the city? I think that they should be able to afford their own health care coverage. You're giving $4.50 to low-paid individuals to cover their costs, so they can sign up for quote-unquote "affordable" health care. Why not somebody who's making $200,000? Why not let them pay for their own health care coverage?
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Zumadog.
Yes, Madam Council President, I don't believe that we've had this experience before. It's such a privilege. I don't know much about Milage Peaks, but I know that I am not for this appointment, and it's because it's the mayor's first choice. I'm here to say, if I could please have some quiet in the quorum here, in the chambers. Here's the problem. The last fire chief went to the mayor and said, "You know what, mayor? I need more money for my fire staff, and we need more money and resources. We've got dangerous situations where people have to go out and do rescues in dangerous communities and dangerous neighborhoods, and we need backup and support." It's not supposed to be a SWAT team. It's not supposed to be a SWAT team. So, you know, unfortunately, the last fire chief asked the mayor for financial resources. He was told, "Don't ask me for anything. Don't ask me for anything," and he quickly got fired. So the mayor just wants a puppet. And also, with these commission appointments, you have to be, with these appointments the mayor makes, boy, you do not want to stand up to him. You will be out so fast. If you are a building inspector, and you want to go inspect some clear-channel billboards for fire safety or for being illegal, boy, you will have something leaked to the media so fast, and you will be pushed out so fast. So I'd like to warn Milage Peaks, even though I'm sure this is somebody the mayor's just putting in there to go along and shut up and go with all the brownouts and don't ask for anything and do what I say. I'm here to warn Milage Peaks. Boy, don't ask for anything. Don't stand up. Don't do your job. You will be fired. You won't get much mileage at all out of Milage if you stand up to the mayor. And since I have a little bit of time left, I'd like to say that the city is under attack of Mayor Antonio Vieragosa through his commission appointments and all of these committees, through everybody the mayor picks. I know whether I like this person or not, if it's the mayor's first pick, I don't. If it's somebody the mayor couldn't get through, and it's his third or fourth choice, and he's very unhappy, well, then you know it's a good person. And the city's under attack through these appointments of the mayor. Zumadog for City Council will stand up on this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Troy Westbrook from our distinguished Stentorians.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President, the honorable members of the Los Angeles City Council. I'm Troy Westbrook. I'm the president of the Stentorians. The Stentorians are the Association of African-Americans in the fire service. And I'm also a firefighter paramedic, and I work at Fire Station 83 in Encino. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for the selection of Chief Peaks. I understand the selection process was a difficult one because of all the talented individuals. The mayor's made an excellent selection in Chief Peaks. Chief Peaks brings 33 years of experience and talent to the fire chief's position. Chief Peaks is an outstanding leader. He's fair, he's intelligent, he's equitable, and he's also compassionate. Chief Peaks will continue to move the department on the path that was started by Chief Berry, the fire commission, and the mayor. I urge you, the council, to confirm Chief Peaks today as our new fire chief. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker will be Michael Hunt.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you. From the desert to the sea, city council should listen to me. Vote this guy in so we could win. He has the experience... He has the experience. He has the determination to run the second-largest fire department in the United States. He deserves a chance, and listen to me from the desert to the sea. Vote yes on this. I need everybody to get a yes vote right here and right now. That's it, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that ends our public comment on this item. Mr. Peaks, would you like to come forward? Mr. Barnes, would you like to escort him to the center table?
Good morning.
Okay. Good morning. Actually, it looks like the clock is now showing afternoon.
Good afternoon.
But we're glad to hear if you'd like to make a few comments, and then we've got some council members on the queue.
It's an honor to be here with you this morning. It's been an interesting process the last two weeks, dealing with the brush fires and losing two of our brother firefighters with the LA County Fire Department, and then dealing, obviously, with some of the infrastructure issues over the last week have really been a challenge. But as always, the Los Angeles City Fire Department has stepped up and done an outstanding job, as always. I'm proud to be the interim fire chief. I hope to be the permanent fire chief by the end of our meeting here today, and I pledge that I will do everything within my power to protect the people that live and work inside the city of Los Angeles, and I want to be the best fire chief that we've ever had. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. First speaker is a council member, Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I just want to let you know that I appreciate your willingness to take on this awesome responsibility, and your record reflects that you have a career and experience that has well-prepared you for this, so congratulations. But also, at the same time, I just wanted to remind you that there are some matters that the fire department needs to continue, continue to work toward and solve and make progress on. For example, when it comes to technology issues, the reverse 911 matter, we need to make sure that we continue to move forward on that.
Right, we do.
Okay? And then also, when it comes to capital projects, we've built some firehouses with the bond that the public passed and the taxpayers have been paying for, and they've done a tremendous job of building some good facilities, but we have a few more to go. And I just wanted to make sure that you and your brass in your department have as much input as anybody when it comes to where these final facilities are going to be sited. I don't want to leave it only to the bond oversight committee or to the mayor's office or what have you. I think that it's integral and important that your department be directly involved in that as well and have appropriate input. For example, we built some animal shelter facilities throughout the city, and they are functioning wonderfully. But a perfect example of us as a city not communicating with everybody involved, we have some medical facilities inside of these animal shelters that unfortunately, when the doctors finally went in there, they said, "This is not designed for our use. It looks nice, it's brand-new, it looks plenty roomy, but it's just not designed for our use."
Right.
And we've had to retrofit and spend more money when we should have just done it right the first time. So I think it's very important that your office have input on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay? In addition to that, I think when it comes to community programs, we'd like the department to host CERT training for deaf and hard-of-hearing families as well. We have an entire population that we serve, and I think it's a matter that all of us need to learn how to respect and serve every sector of the population that we are mandated to serve, and I think that the department has done a good job so far, but we still have some ways to go there as well. Okay?
Yes, sir.
In addition to that, my last point I'd like to make today is that when it comes to first responder training, I'd like to thank the department once again for being involved in that. We've all heard the realistic stories that sometimes the first people on the scene when something occurs, perhaps a shooting in a neighborhood, is in fact the fire department with their paramedics, et cetera, and sometimes it can be a dangerous situation. And the fire department has reported, unfortunately, that officers have heard bullets zoom by them and their trucks as they're rolling in. So as a result of that, there have been some training that have been going on with Maximum Force Enterprises, someone that everybody knows in this city, whether you like USC or not. Pete Carroll has been very involved with that, with his organization, A Better L.A., and it's going well. I just want to make sure that you understand that it's critical and important for your men and women, but also for the community as well, that we continue that synergy and that education.
We will, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, you're next.
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Kretz is next. I was just getting you ready. Mr. Kretz, you're actually next.
Thank you. I think you're very well-qualified for this position, and I look forward to working with you as chief. I have one question, though, which is, as we all know, the fire department has had a substantial cut, and that cut has been expressed out on the streets in terms of fewer companies at some of the stations, fewer paramedics, et cetera. We have been told that those cuts all needed to be in those positions. Now that you are in this position, are you looking in the same direction, or do you think there are also other places to cut within your department that don't reflect directly on direct service?
We are going to start looking at the way that we deliver our service. Our business model is the same business model that we have had for the 126 years that we've been in existence. I'm working together with my staff to look at changing the trajectory of the upper management, start doing some out-of-the-box thinking and looking at more efficient ways to deliver our service, more economical ways to deliver our service. We're looking at revenue flows, revenue streams, to see how we can increase our input on cash. And as you already know, we're one of the few, if not the only, department in the city of Los Angeles that is, we feel like we're doing a lot in our shared sacrifice with this modified coverage plan. So we know that this is nothing magical. This crisis is something that is probably going to be with us for the next two to three years, and I think that we are prepared to work to try and bridge that gap and hopefully make our department even stronger than it is today.
So I take that as that you'll be looking for alternatives to just cutting service on the streets and having a modified plan that we're laboring under.
We're not interested in cutting service at all. If anything, we would like to improve service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Rosendahl, it's really you.
Mr. Zahn, thank you very much for this opportunity. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We're looking forward to your leadership. Couple of quick questions. You and I bonded under one of those most unfortunate circumstances, when Brent Loveland was killed in the line of duty over the explosion that took place in Westchester.
Right, sir.
We appreciate your leadership, and I know we're going through Fire Station 95 in memory of him to upgrade that facility and to make it better. So first, I want to thank you for the leadership you've shown in my district. And for those who don't know, recently, you've been the battalion chief with five stations here, LAX being one, Mar Vista being another, Venice being one, Westchester, and Playa del Rey. So we know you and we love you, and we know you're going to be a great chief. When Chief Berry came on, we were in the midst of this Tenny Pierce dog food insanity and paid out a lot of taxpayers' money. He said to the mayor, "I need some tools to make sure this doesn't happen again." Now he's left after a great leadership with us. How do you see improving that whole issue of potential hazing and potential situations? Are you comfortable you have the tools you need to see that this never happens again?
Obviously, if we had all the money in the world, there are a lot of tools that I could go out and purchase. But first things first, what I need to do is to institutionalize all of the changes and controls that Chief Berry implemented. And between our professional standards division, all of the audit recommendations, all of our work environment issues that we've dealt with, I think that what I'd like to do is just stand on his shoulders, build on what he's done, continue our zero-tolerance mantra amongst our people. Again, I intend to visit, as he did, every fire station in the city. I plan to share with everyone what my vision is, what my expectations are, and I'm going to do everything within my power to make sure that we don't ever have the situation that we had during that period in time.
I appreciate that. There's still a couple of other sensitive issues within this concept. One are women, female officers. What's the percentage of female firefighters at this point?
We're probably somewhere around 3%. We're not near where we need to be or where we're going to be by the time I leave. We're planning on implementing a lot of targeted recruitment and a lot of community outreach, and not only, not just for women, but people from every sector within the community.
And some of the other sector happens to be gay people.
Absolutely.
Who feel terribly unappreciated because some of the crazy homophobia insanity that has to be gotten rid of. And so I look forward to your leadership for gay folks as well as for women, so the diversity of our community is reflected in our fire.
Thank you very much, yes.
And the last thing is what Mr. Kretz was saying. We're both very, very worried as we have another hot day today. You know, we all saw the station fire, and I have had two fires on the edge of my district. Thank God you all were such great, 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 quick to it. One was the Sepulveda Fire going up the hill that almost hit Mountain Gate, that they worked through the night with helicopters and doused that fire.
Right.
The other one was the one the other day that was quickly, more quickly put out. Fire Station 69, Fire Station 5, Fire Station 63, and 59 are somewhat, and my constituents concerned about some of this period of one company here and out at a certain hour, especially Fire Station 69, meaning my Westchester, my people in the Palisades.
Pacific Palisades, right.
Were very concerned. Give me some comfort. I do not want response time to drag out, be it a life at stake or a fire becoming ablaze.
What we've done with the 15 fire companies that we're closing on a daily basis is we're trying to spread them out as much as we possibly can throughout the city. It's on a rotational basis. 69 is their engine or their light force is closed, only one segment during a 27-day period of time, and then it rotates to another district. So what we've tried to do is maintain, out of all the 105 fire stations that we have, we are covering every district in the city 24/7, and that's what we intend to do.
And knock on wood, after the station fire, I know we suspended that for a period, watching that blaze, to make sure we weren't caught empty-handed.
Right. What we do during peak periods of high hazard, where we believe the weather conditions would place us in a period that we may be susceptible to brush fires, it's my intent to suspend the modified coverage plan when I believe that there is potential for a large-scale emergency inside the city.
Saying that, if we see a spark in one of our mountains around here, and we do straddle through the great Rocky Mountains on both sides of it, from the Pacific Palisades to Eagle Rock, you feel comfortable that you'll be able to quickly turn around and respond and do what we need to do?
Absolutely.
Good. Well, thank you, and again, congratulations. We look forward to your leadership.
Thank you very much, councilman.
Mr. Barnes.
Milich Peaks, congratulations to you and your family.
Thank you, sir.
Want to introduce your family right now and take this opportunity? I think it would be special.
I'd like to first introduce my wife, Ann Peaks, please. I have a total of four children. Our oldest child, Robie, lives in Tokyo, works for a marketing company there. He wasn't able to be here today. Our second-oldest child is my oldest daughter, Jolie. My third child, her name is Lauren, and she works for, she's an airport police officer, works for the Los Angeles World Airports. She wasn't able to, she wasn't able to get the day off today, so. She's out there protecting the airport. And then my oldest child is Milich, my youngest. Did I say my oldest? My youngest. So, anyway.
Thank you for that introduction. You grew up in Los Angeles, in Inglewood area?
Yes, sir.
Went to Morningside High?
Morningside High.
And where'd you go to college?
Cal State Domingos Hills and El Camino College.
El Camino College.
Graduated from both, yes.
Right. And where was your first assignment on the fire service?
Right here in downtown, I worked at Battalion 1, Fire Station 3, 9, and 4.
At old 3s?
Old 3s.
On Hill Street.
Right, over on Hill Street.
Right.
And spent most of my career, 14 years, in South LA. Battalion 3 was most of my career.
But you also have an interest in urban affairs as far as cities, which has always impressed me. And whether I was a staff member or now an elected official, with any conversation I had with you, you had the community at heart, which was so important.
Always.
Explain your vision for Los Angeles.
Well, what I would like to do is increase our activism in terms of community outreach, looking at, in fact, Captain Alicia Mathis is here with our fire program, which we're going to hopefully start up next year at Drill Tower 40, again, with Aquil Bishir and Paulie Cooper with the gang outreach program. Hopefully, we'll partner up again with the Housing Authority and start our summer basketball league up again that we used to have a number of years ago, and always our explorer program citywide. So I mean, there are a number of community-based programs that the fire department supports, and I hope, under my leadership, we will continue to grow.
Always in my life in Los Angeles, it's been 55 years, the fire department had a very big impact. I know Mr. Zahn and I went at it a few years ago, because I wanted to be a firefighter. I took the test at Hollywood High in 1974, and I didn't pass it. Mr. Zahn remembered everybody. He jumped up and said that, but then I reminded Mr. Zahn, it shows you the LAPD will take anybody when it comes to Mr. Zahn. But I think the point there is the relationship with schools and young people, whether it's men and women of all diversity, is so important to see some type of sister-city program with some of our community colleges, to know there's an opportunity at the LAFD if you work hard. And if it's not at the LAFD, it's with the county or with some other agency. The fire department and firefighters are in every neighborhood in the city of Los Angeles and have an impact on our community, so I look forward to working with you. We do have some students from Biola College. Would you stand up and be recognized right now from Biola College in the back? Give them a little hand there. It's important, as people come into that open door of a fire station, which was so part of my life going up across from 56s and going to Ivanhoe School, and they used to park on High Pier and at the market, and they used to, believe it or not, burn lots for fire prevention in the city. Lot cleaning was always there. The one question I do want to ask you, the most significant event, other than the tragic fires that claim the life of two county firefighters, but is our water system has been challenged in, not only in the cold water area, Mr. Kretz's Valley Village District, but also in the Hollywood, West Los Angeles area, there's been several main breaks. I think it's important, we work at, I believe there is, I don't know if Mr. Park knows, there's like $42 million in your hydrant trust fund or whatever. We have to look at that to make sure, because if you don't have the water, you can't put out the fire.
Right. Without a water system, there is no fire department.
Correct. So it's so key to that. And also, on a medical end, I know 80% of your calls are medical. I think we should do some studies. I know the New York Times recently had a feature in their newspaper about the challenges of modern fire service as it relates to medical service, and I know the big discussion in the United States right now is healthcare and how it all relates. I'm just proud of you. I'm proud of you because of how you always worked, and you always helped, and you always tried to do the right thing. Okay? You always tried to do the right thing, which is so important. I think we've got a great fire chief here, and I'm honored to ask for an aye vote for Milich Peaks.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, the great friend of the fire department, you always have been. You're quite the champion for them. Our next speaker would be Councilmember Zahn.
Thank you. The 33 years of service, LA City Fire Department.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of folks in this council chamber, I don't know if they're supporting you or opposing you. Can I see, just show hands, those of you who are supporting? Anyone opposing? There's no opposition. That's good. That's good. Not one opposed, well, there was one who spoke. The ambulance service that we provide versus what the county provides.
Right.
We provide transportation. 80-plus percent of the calls are for medical. Have we ever analyzed to see if we could save some dollars by utilizing private for the transport, not for the initial response? the transport, not for the initial response for the transport? Can you hold my time, please?
I'm not sure whether we've ever studied that before, but I'd be more than happy to look into it.
I just think that there may be an opportunity, since money is so tight and they're doing the brownouts, et cetera. The other question regarding money for the department, I had dinner recently at Station Number 4, brand-new station here in downtown LA.
Right.
Great cooks, great dinner. And we talked about some of the ways to raise revenue so we can get these contracts done with the Fire Department, the Police Department, et cetera. One of the issues came up was the alarm calls, where they'll call for a fire alarm because there's no billing for that. There's billing for police alarms, but oftentimes they say, "It's not a fire issue, it's a police issue," but they call the Fire Department because they know they're not going to get billed on it.
Right.
We need to correct that, so they'll be billed the same as if it's a police response. And these false calls, when they're sending out the truck and the engine, et cetera, tremendous response, which the department's notorious for, get there as quickly as possible, and there's no billing for it.
Right.
We need to plug that.
We will.
The other issue regarding response to traffic collisions, where there's a drunk driver involved and extrication, et cetera, do we bill those folks that create that tragic situation? And if we don't, we can, according to law, bill those people. So if a drunk driver's going down the road and plows into a car, and then you send units and you have to extricate, et cetera, we can bill those people according to the law. And if we're not billing them, we should.
We should be.
Which gives us additional dollars so we can get these contracts underway and pay the personnel as we need to pay them.
Right.
So I'm just trying to find some ways to generate more money without increasing taxes. Also, San Francisco, I read an article recently, that San Francisco didn't send any units to the fires that took plan, they're still burning. San Francisco Fire Department didn't send units because they had so many units that were out of service, they couldn't send units.
Right.
Which is tragic when we talk about mutual aid. I know that we've got some situations with the diesel pumps, some of them aren't working. We have some issues where the maintenance, while you have a great maintenance department, some of the belts on the trucks are breaking.
Right.
We need to correct that.
Right.
To make sure that those units are available to respond, so we don't get in a position where we don't have units to send because they're out of service, which I understand happened in San Francisco. They didn't send anyone down to this rash of fires we experienced.
Right.
The other issue is the contract that is lingering for the Fire Department. There's no contract. It expired at the end of June. We want to get it resolved. The brownouts that are taking place now have created some friction between the department, the community, and the people love Fire Department, there's no question. They love the firefighters. We don't want the people to change their attitude.
Right.
But somehow, we need to work together, figure out how we're going to get those dollars so we can have the adequate services for the districts throughout the city.
Thank you, Mr.
And on my district, I represent Mountain Fire District, from Mulholland to Ventura Boulevard, Mr. Rosendale. Many of us have those Mountain Fire Districts, and we keep our fingers crossed that we're not going to have a blaze, and we know what happens when the San Anas come.
Yes.
So you need to look at all those issues, and I totally support you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
With 33 years of service, you well deserve that position, but we need to look at some of the areas we can raise some additional dollars so we can get these contracts and get things underway.
Thank you.
We will, thank you.
Thank you. Good line of questioning. Mr. Parks here, our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. Millet, I just wanted to congratulate you. You know, it's a historical day, although many people will believe we should get over it. But when you think about, particularly myself, having grown up on 33rd and Central and walking by the station on 34th, knowing at that time, in the 50s, that that may have been the only place people of color could actually work in the Fire Department.
Right.
To progress to the point of having two people of color consecutively to run a Fire Department is remarkable. And I think it's one of those deals that, although people will say, "Get over it," I think it is something that is certainly a great deal of pride. And I think also people don't realize just how difficult it is for you to be in this position today, having put 33 years in the department, navigating through the internal process and also the examination process. It is still a remarkable achievement. I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. You deserve it. And so, and I just asked you to do one thing, just remember how you got there and keep doing what you're doing.
I'll never forget.
Okay.
Mr. Reyes, follow Mr. Wesson and Ms. Hahn. Mr. Ed Reyes.
Ed Reyes, you're up.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, in terms of, as a leader of this department, there are many properties, many facilities that you'll be managing and controlling. This city is facing a $400 million fiscal hole. I mean, we are at the precipice, and this deficit is going to be impacting the quality of life at many different levels. There's a major facility in my district. It's a maintenance yard.
Right.
I applaud the captain about four years ago, I forget his name, who came up with a concept paper of how we can promote a mixed-use facility to free up city land so we could generate revenue by allowing private sector to take advantage of this property.
Right.
Now, it has received little attention, gotten very little traction in the past couple of years by the other department heads, who would and should be cooperating with the Fire Department and reassessing and understanding these opportunities to generate revenue for the city. My question to you, Chief, is, do you have the skills in your department? Do you have the type of wherewithal? Is there a desire in the culture of the Fire Department to evaluate the properties you do control, to look at how we can be opportunistic with the properties we could share with other departments without compromising the effectiveness of the Fire Department? Is that within your will and desire to go into that arena and effectuate that type of change, given the hardships this city is suffering economically?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, what strategies have you come across, or is there any concepts you have in mind, or is this something new to you?
It is new, but I'd be more than willing to explore it and study it and find out what the feasibility of it would be. If there's a need to generate more revenue, which there is.
There definitely is.
We would be more than happy to explore that.
Well, within a year, we will have re-entitled the property that that facility sits on.
Right.
Then the capacity on that development site is going to triple, if not quadruple.
Right.
It's untapped resource that we as a city are choosing to ignore because of the fight mentality of the department heads.
Right.
And not working together. And that's something that has to change if we're going to be saving jobs.
Right.
If we're going to maintain quality of life. One last point, I know I'm going a little bit over my time. Bicycles is a very, I believe, critical option in this day and age, given what's happening to environment, congestion. Is there a way to track the statistics where we can find out where bicyclists are being struck by cars? I know your operation, they pick up, they respond to accidents. Is there a way to track the number of times a bicyclist gets struck by a car? The reason why that's important is we can start defining on a citywide basis how to make our streets safer.
Right.
We can highlight those dangerous zones where we have bicyclists being struck by cars more often than not. Is that something that could be tracked within your system?
I believe that that data would be captured inside of our dispatch computer, so when the 911 call taker inputs the information and dispatches a fire company or an ambulance, that information is on the dispatch printout, so we would have that data available.
So could I have my staff connect with yours?
Yes.
The Department of Transportation?
Yes.
And understand how we deal with the circulation patterns?
Yes.
And enhance the safety bicyclists?
Because you might be able to see trends, certain intersections, certain streets in the city that are more prone to those types of accidents.
Exactly.
Right.
Well, thank you, Chief, and you've received a lot of praise from my colleagues. I look forward to working with you. These are very trying times, and we're going to need the type of leadership that you reflect in that post. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wesson, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. I want to recognize Janethia Hayes is here. She's been, Janethia, the leader of the Fire Commission, and the Fire Commission did a phenomenal job, embedded some very qualified individuals. And I know that there were tough decisions, but you should be commended for the process that you put in place, because no one can question at the end of the day, we're going to have the individual that is best qualified to be the fire chief of the greatest city on the planet, and you should take some credit for that.
Mr. Wesson, we have two-
Let's give Janethia another round of applause.
We have two commissioners here, Mr. West. We can hear from them following the comments.
Thank you. That won't go against my time.
No, it won't.
And I also wanted to say to young Millet, now I want you to take a hard look at your dad, and I hope you think that he's a handsome man because you look just like him. And he and I had a meeting several weeks ago, and we were talking about our first names. See, Herb is not my real, and we won't go where it is. And we talked about how unique our names were, but yet and still, we were proud that we cursed our son, so. But I just wanted to say this, as Bill mentioned, the need for female firefighters. I've noticed in the Los Angeles Police Department, which is really becoming a phenomenal department, I attribute a lot of that to the increase in the women that are on the department. So I look forward to working with you to try to increase the numbers of female firefighters as well. And I just wanted to say this to my other colleagues. This is a man who has worked for 33 years. He could easily retire. You're getting ready to face trying times, just like us on the council, for several years. I learned a long time ago, it is easy to lead when you have budget surpluses and when things are fine. Anybody can lead during the easy times. You will be judged by your actions by these challenging times, and for that, I really commend you, because you didn't have to do it. You could be golfing, where I would be so envious, but you could be golfing. But this is going to be a very difficult time, and I think at the end of the day, the way that you react for the next few years will help build the legacy that I helped that you leave. But I do want you to know, I remember we chatted in passing, and you wanted to thank people for support or whatever. I want to say, you did this. You aced the interviews. You put in 33 years of service. You worked in various departments within the Fire Department. At the end of the day, you did this. And I do pray, and I hope, that your children, all of them, recognize that you just, this is probably one of the most difficult courses with obstacles everywhere, that your father had to travel to get to this point. So don't take it for granted just because you know he's a smart man and a good guy. Know that he had to juggle, he had to walk a tightrope, he probably had to watch what he said when he knew he was right, but finally, you got the big reward. In the City of Los Angeles, the mayor's office and the council, we're depending on you, and we will be here to work for you. I'm very proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Hahn, our final speaker, and then we'll hear from the commissioners.
Thank you. I did notice that Pat McCosker was in the audience, and I know he got here after public comment because he was participating in our city's 9/11 memorial service.
We're going to call him in, Ms. Hahn. We'll call him.
Would it be appropriate for him to speak now?
No, we'll call him after your comments.
Okay.
Because we got, the commissioners are going to hear from also.
Okay. I just want to make sure that he gets a chance to speak. Peaks, it's great to have you here. I was actually standing with Lou Repoli in the Harbor area when I got the text message saying that the mayor had made the recommendation for your appointment, and Lou remembers. I think that you all joined at the same time.
He took credit for me, didn't he?
Yes, yes. And I guess you were in the academy together, and he couldn't say enough nice things about you. Apparently, you are a firefighter's firefighter, which I think will mean a lot to the men and women in this department. A lot has been said today. I certainly am one of those that has been pretty vocal about my opposition to this modified plan, to having any brownouts at any time. I don't care if it's August, September, October, November, December. I don't want any of my stations less than fully operational. We've got to figure out a better way to save money in the city besides putting our residents at risk through less services for our Fire Department. That's how I feel, and we're going to work together to try to figure that out.
Yes, we will.
Let me give another little issue that I'm concerned about. I just want to make sure that we're all aware of this. Certainly on 9/11, I always think about the Port of Los Angeles. I still feel, eight years later, we have probably not done as enough as we could as a country in securing our ways into this country, particularly our ports of entry, like Los Angeles and Long Beach, biggest port in the country, America's port. I still worry every single day that something might happen there. It's interesting to me that the stations that are a part of this modified plan, part of the brownouts, happen to be 38s, 48s, 85s. All three of those stations are partially funded by the Port of Los Angeles. And 48s is one that particularly concerns me. That's our hazmat unit down there in the Harbor area. Certainly, if something were to happen, we know that the boats are going to respond.
Right.
And the port certainly pays for them 100%, but there's more than just boats, in my opinion, that will need to be the first responders in case of a major attack at the Port of Los Angeles. And I worry that 48s, you know, is a part of this modified plan. But I also think we may be, you know, cutting off our nose despite our face. The port pays the Fire Department $21 million a year to partially fund some of these stations.
Right.
So when we begin taking them out of service, whether it's an engine or it's some firefighters, and I believe, and we will reduce the payment that we're going to get from the port, because I'm sure it's an accounting thing, and if they've been out of service, then I think under state law, the port will probably figure out a way that they won't need to reimburse. Have you looked at that idea? I'm very concerned about that. I know none of us want our stations less, but I think the ones down in the Harbor area are particularly critical to this whole area in case there were something to happen at the port.
Well, I know 48s is the hazmat task force, 85s is our urban search and rescue task force, and 38s is our technical decon task force down there. And I know at the airport, we've got both USAR and hazmat, and we're not closing, we're currently not closing those stations. So what we're going to, what I'll do is go back to staff, we'll look at it, review it, discuss it with your staff, and try and figure out another plan.
I think that's exactly the kind of answer I wanted to hear from you. Let's look at that $21 million and figure out another, a creative way to make sure that the port pays for it, but more importantly, that those services are 100% available at any time in that area.
We will look at it.
Thank you very much. I plan to vote for you today.
Thank you.
I think you'll make a fine fire chief.
Thank you.
Well, he definitely has the experience, 33 years. That completes the council members. We have two commissioners here, and then Mr. McCosker. Commissioners, you want to come forward, please? And then Mr. McCosker, after this. Commissioners, your comments?
Thank you, Councilman Zines. I am Janethia Hutley Hayes. I'm the president of the Los Angeles Board of Fire Commissioners, and Judge Casimiro Tolentino is the vice president for the Los Angeles Board of Fire Commissioners. We both participated in the process that got us to four candidates. I believe that Councilman Wesson was exactly correct. The field of candidates that was sent to the mayor was so highly qualified, that the thing that I want the council to understand today is that in the selection of Chief Peaks, we have the very finest in terms of the skill set, in terms of him being operationally excellent. He is also, in our belief, the one candidate who stood above the other candidates around the issues that I know that the council is concerned about, that the city is concerned about, that we are concerned about is oversight, and that is the workplace issues. The fact that we are on the right road, thanks to the foundation- The fact that we are on the right road, thanks to the foundation that Chief Berry set around the reduction and the cessation of harassment, of hazing, of making our fire service welcoming to women, to people of color, of making sure that our Fire Cadet program is including a diversity of the young people in the City of Los Angeles. One of the things that Chief Peeks is noted for is the fact that we know that belonging to the Los Angeles Fire Department is not just a job, it's a career move. And we have young people in urban Los Angeles who will now have a Fire Cadet program that is going to be internal to the Fire Department, that will look at recruitment, that will look at developing them, that will look at a career path, will be helping them to stay in school. And I know that that's one of the things that this council and that this mayor is concerned about. The Fire Commission is prepared to work in concert, not adversarially, not hostilely, but to be working in concert, in collaboration, in developing a shared agenda for the Los Angeles Fire Department, for the citizens of Los Angeles, for the residents of Los Angeles. I think it's important to note that Chief Peeks has the support of many of our communities, many of the diverse communities in Los Angeles were very supportive of him. The African-American community and the leadership in the African-American community in the West Side, the Jewish community was very instrumental in being supportive of Chief Peeks. He has the respect, and this is the most important thing for the council to understand, he has the respect and the support of his internal troops. You cannot be a leader if those people that you are inviting into a vision do not respect you, do not understand that your word is your bond. And that is what we have here in Chief Millich Peeks. And I think that Commissioner Tolentino probably would like to add some things to that because he brings a vastly wonderful skill set to the commission as well. Commissioner Tolentino?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, let me just add that everything that President Hutley Hayes rang through for us as a commission, I think he grilled the candidates in those areas that have plagued us as a city and the citizens for the past, at least since the time I got appointed. We spent much time with very good candidates, and we came up with very, just incredibly well-qualified individuals, but Chief Peeks came out on top. I know as a commission, we look forward to working with Chief Peeks. He understands the issues that the commission's interested in and what the commission's been struggling with. I understand his goal of changing the trajectory of the management, which is really important, at least for the commission, and responding to many of the audit recommendations that we've implemented. I know that, at least from speaking with the, within the fire service, Chief Peeks is held in very high regard, and also held in very high regard within the different respective communities here in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
One more individual, the United Firefighters of Los Angeles, their president, Mr. Pat McCosker, for our final comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am a little bit late because I came from that beautiful memorial service for 9/11 victims today. But I got over here because I wanted to urge your confirmation, to urge that you make Millich Peeks our next Fire Chief. Just as Councilmember Wesson said a minute ago, these are extraordinarily challenging times for our department. And our department, I think, is extraordinarily challenged during the best of times. But right now, with the budget crisis on us and all the other things we face, you know, we really need, I think, to have that rapport between the rank and file and the representatives and the head of our department, the Fire Chief, and his staff. Millich Peeks is someone I've known for a very long time, worked with him on union issues. He happened to serve, by the way, in a couple of very key positions from the union's perspective, at least, probably behind Fire Chief being the most important position, the second and third most important, and that would be Employee Relations Officer and the Executive Officer in charge of the discipline of the Fire Department, really running that office. And so we know him to be a man of integrity, you know, a man whose word is his bond, someone that we can trust. We've seen the decisions he's made, and we know where he's coming from, and I know that we can work with him very closely as the Fire Chief, Union President, and all of Local 112, because we do have a lot of challenges that we have to face together. I think the goal for all of us is to get through the times we're in right now with the absolute minimum impact on the public, on the safety of the people that we're sworn to protect. And that's something that I'm going to do with the Fire Chief, and I know from having known him this long that he's going to be willing to work with us. There's a little bit of family history, by the way. I think my dad was probably the first endorser of this man for future leadership of the Fire Department. He was either just a rookie or just off probation when they worked together in the Crenshaw area of Los Angeles. My brother Mike, who preceded me by two years in the Fire Department, wanted very badly to get on the Fire Department then, and my dad said, "You've got to come down and meet this guy. He just went through the process, and this guy's something else." And Millich actually mentored my brother Mike onto the Fire Department. So we kind of go way back, at least the McCoskers and the Peeks, and I look forward to working with him, and I urge you to confirm him today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. That concludes the comments on this. Matter's now before us. Don't be nervous. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Our new Fire Chief, congratulations.
And, Mr. President, for the record, the salary has been established at $260,000.
Well worth it. Well worth it. All right, let's do a group shot. Mr. Labange is going to bring the council to the center for a group shot with a new Fire Chief. Council members, if you please, go to the center at the speaker's table. Mr. Weesar, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Wesson. Look at the commissioners there, too. All right, the swearing-in for the Fire Chief will be at the Port of Public Works, room 350. Those of you here for the Fire Chief, the swear-in will take place, room 350, the Board of Public Works room. And that's going to happen immediately. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, our next item, please.
Still within the special meeting, item 20, called Special for Cards.
Dr. Clyde Williams, a number 20, please. The doctor, number 20. Doctor, you're up.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno.
Excuse me, can we get some order in here? We're going to continue the council meeting, the celebration to take place in Public Works for the Fire Chief, room 350 for the Fire Chief. Thank you. Doctor, we're going to keep your time on hold until we can get a little bit of order back in the chambers. Sergeant Arms, can we get the chamber back in order? Sergeant Arms, can we get the chamber back in order, please? Can we get the chamber back in order? Can we have those folks move to the other room that we can get this meeting back in session? Thank you. Okay, Doctor, I think we're ready to hear you now.
Thank you. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. The Prop 13 defenders, they won. We lost. We lost more than that. However, by their winning, water revenues are no longer going to be used to supplement the general fund. Now, we can use only power, that is, the net surplus revenues, which are being transferred to the general fund. Soon, there will be a consideration for trash also being used to support the police. How about sewerage for the Fire Department? How about water for the sewage and sanitation departments and the stormwater departments? This is all a big cloud. Who knows where the money is going? Who knows where the money is coming from? One of the issues is accountability, transparency. Why can't we just say on the DWP bill, "This is a police fee. This is a Fire Department fee. This is a sanitation Department fee." Why can't we have it clearly defined rather than all of the different subterfuges that are being done? In the item 16, we want to look at developing another Prop 13. Well, a Prop 13 that doesn't require 2/3 majority vote. Why can't we just tell the people of the City of Los Angeles where the money is coming from and what it's going to be used for, and get a 2/3 majority vote on every fee increase? Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Arnold Sachs, our next speaker.
The reason they can't tell you where the money's going is because they're crooks. Authorizing payment of attorney fees, yet paying for the controller's court case, the fees involved there, no such action. You have no authority over proprietary departments, only the ability to make recommendations. Why not spell that out to the public? Dr. Williams, that's the real problem. It's a proprietary department. They don't have the authority. They only have the ability to make recommendations. It's one of those departments, the DWP, Lawa, and Harbor, all proprietary departments, only accessible to, thank you, sir, accessible, to city recommendations, not city actions. When the public starts to realize that, that fees come in but aren't spent on the required projects because they're all proprietary departments, not accessible to city actions, only recommendations, and if you listen to the recommendations that this council makes, you'll know why the city is facing a $400 million budget deficit.
Michael Hunt, our final speaker. Mr. Hunt.
Well, again, Michael Hunt on the record. It seems like we're back to the same place, and if you guys really don't have a real voice on what happens and who approves the transfers of money, then you guys' office is not in void. But otherwise, I'm going to yield to the distinguished new councilman, Zuma Dogg, on this issue.
There's no yielding, and we're looking for a card from Mr. Zuma Dogg. I do not see a card here. There's no card, Mr. Zuma Dogg. You want to fill out a card? We'll listen to you. No, no, Mr. Brown, you're, Mr. Hunt, your time is done. Mr. Hunt, your time is done. I'm not going to argue with you, sir. Your time is done. You yielded to him. There's no yielding. Mr. Zuma Dogg, you want to fill out a card? Okay, that matter is now concluded. Matter's now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there was a request to reconsider item 17 by Councilmember Rosendahl.
All right, on reconsideration, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, that matter now before us.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Could we ask Meg to come on up? Folks, what I want to tell you is, the stimulus money business was very, very good today. Mr. Weesar was there, Mr. Parks and I were there, Mr. Wesson and I were there, and there's money that's coming from the federal government that's going to help us in some of our concerns that we have regarding people living in cars and campers. In fact, a half a million dollars is going to go into a plan where PATH, which is a group of folks, people assisting the homeless, and we've identified the St. Joseph Center in Venice as one of the opportunities to do it. Meg, give us a quick hit on that 29 million and this particular project, and I want to say a few more other things. Hold my time, please.
Yes, sir. Meg Barkley with the CLA's office. The total amount of the grant provided to the City of Los Angeles under the Homeless Prevention Rapid Rehousing Program is approximately $29 million. A portion of that, $500,000 of that, is being used for this vehicular outreach program designed to provide outreach services and staff to reach out to individuals living or households living in cars and campers on the streets, and provide them with referrals to services to maybe get them more stably housed.
And to say that in terms of real dollars and cents, which we approved earlier in the consent mode here, is $16,961,000 in homeless prevention and rapid rehousing funding, $5,860,000 available for regional coordination, $500,000 for vehicle, vehicular outreach, and $10 million for homeless prevention. This is good money. It will be properly used. I might say that the St. Joseph Center will be holding a meeting in their location there right off of Rose Avenue. We're inviting the Venice community leadership, all sides of the issue of people living in cars and campers, to be part of the process. The St. Joseph Center will then go out and help identify some of the folks who are living in cars and campers, and we also want to move forward with locations where cars and campers can go. This is a new day and a new beginning. This is the first- This is the first bit of good news I've gotten from the federal government that is directly related to a significant issue in our city. All of us have cars and campers in our neighborhoods appearing out of nowhere. We have a dumb law done in the 80s that said it's illegal to sleep in your car and campers. People do it. I don't want to criminalize these people, I want to change that law, and I want to find locations where they can go in dignity, where they can do their sewer stuff, where they can get wraparound services and so on. So we're starting this process in Venice. I'm very happy about it, and I say to all my Venice constituents, we now have the opportunity to work on the problem from a constructive standpoint, not just pushing these people around like Santa Monica has done and thrown them in our face, or Redondo Beach has done, or Malibu has done. We need to find solutions. This will help us find the solution. So please be in contact with your neighborhood council in Venice, please be in contact with the St. Joseph Center, my deputy, Arturo Pina, and we're going to work on this until we find solutions that work. But thank you, federal government, thank you, Mayor, for your leadership on this, and we look forward to working on this and making things happen. Obviously, I look for an eye vote from my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. We have two public comments on this matter. Zuma Dogg.
Mr. President, public hearing was satisfied this morning in committee, so a motion would be required on the floor.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I'd like to make an exception and allow them to speak if they want to.
One minute apiece? All right, Mr. Zuma Dogg, one minute.
I can save my time.
Mr. Zuma Dogg's going to pass on that. Our other speaker, Mr. Hunt, one minute.
I do appreciate that one, Bill. I think that's one of the best things that you said all day, that you guys are trying to find solutions to help the homeless people, and that is really important because in America there shouldn't really be any homeless people, and there shouldn't be any bureaucracy regarding these issues of where you're going to stay, and we can build bombs, but we can't take care of our own people. That's senseless. Like I said, it's good to see some federal money allocated to these areas, and I hope the good work continues, and I also hope that it hits the downtown area and let's rehabilitate all the people that want to be rehabilitated in fine homes and campers or wherever they need to live, and let's make the money very useful. My name is Michael Hunt, and I'm really for the have-nots, so this is a good bill, and let's make the money work.
Yes, thank you. I also think it's a good deal, but I'm concerned because it's federal funding going into the city council. Now, Mr. Rosendahl mentioned that half a million dollars is going to go for outreach to people living in their cars. Is that half a million dollars per district in the city council, or is it just the one district? So then, what about the other districts? How is it... Excuse me?
It's not a debate, it's not a debate, it's public comment. Go ahead, sir.
I'm not looking to debate.
It's not a debate, sir.
I'm not looking for a debate, sir.
Okay, then ask the question.
I'm looking for a question. $29 million is going to the city.
That's your comment.
Is it going to one council district? I'm not allowed to ask where the money's going? I'm being told it's going to one council district, or is it going to the whole city?
It's public comment time, sir. You can make a comment, and there's no answer coming forward. Your time is now up. Thank you, Mr. Sacks, your time is up. The matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that does conclude the items in the special meeting. Do you wish to adjourn that meeting and go back to the regular?
Yes, please do that.
Next in the regular meeting, item 13, call special for cards.
Number 13, we have Dr. Williams.
Dennis Zine's ruining his whole reputation today. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Well, here's another one. If you annualize the cost of this particular special event's calendar, it would be roughly the same as all of the neighborhood councils' budget for this last year, probably twice as much for next year. So in one day, you allocate the equivalent of one neighborhood council's entire annual budget. So I might say it's a question as to is this the best way to spend your money? There's also a matter that one of the issues doesn't even indicate how much it's going to cost. It's going to be reimbursed, all fees, all costs. However, there's no way of disclosing how much that is, and in the future, I would highly recommend that it be recorded and distributed to the public so that we know how much money was actually spent versus how much was reimbursed and where the net goes. Audits by the controller. All the neighborhood councils are being subjected to rather rigorous audits, so I would suggest that the same be applied to all special events. So also, $20,000 coming near me, that is Council District 1, and we're going to get a little bit more for Council District 11, which we'll get $9,000 for today. Thank you.
This is not a debate. I'm just curious, there was a meeting a couple weeks ago regarding the special event fees, where it was discussed regarding the outrageous fees enacted for block parties and the fact that these were estimate fees, yet over here you have, just for example, the farmers markets. You have a Los Feliz certified farmers market on Sundays, which costs $551. Then you have a Mar Vista farmers market on two Sundays, which costs almost $2,700. Why the differential in the cost for the farmers market? You have block parties here listed at a reason, I don't know if it's reasonable, but a fair fee of $1,200, almost $1,300 for three block parties. So it's pretty consistent. How are these fees determined? Who is determining them? Where is the money going? And this is not a debate.
Zuma Dogg, our final speaker on this matter.
Yes, by the way, I wonder if we're going to be having public comment today? We still haven't had it. Dennis Zine gets behind the bench, first thing he does, moves public comment to the end, but let's talk about special event fee waivers and not the demise of Dennis Zine as the people's candidate. We've got special event fees. Let me warn something. First of all, I need to clarify. We got a guy who sits on council, his name's Richard Alarcon, and I'm here to tell you he will lie to your face about things that you have said. He will lie to your face.
Mr. President, he is not talking about these issues.
This is my public comment. I'm talking about special events. I'm setting up the fact that regarding a discussion with special event fee waivers, Richard Alarcon lied to the people's face, and he told people that I said things I didn't. The reason I want people to crack down on these special event fee waivers is not to hurt the mom and pops, the small festivals are the reason it was for. He's like, oh, we can't allow Zuma Dogg to dictate public policy in Los Angeles, and oh, he's going to hurt the moms and pops and the small operators. No, I don't want this money going to corporations like All Access Broadway, or the Dodgers, or Vanity Fair, or Academy Awards, or commercial entities. When you do that, you take the money away from the mom and pops and the community members it's supposed to be used for, and then they will tell you, oh, we don't have that money, we just spent $1 million on an Academy Award party. And I'd like to remind you, we got an infrastructure problem. No person in this city council has even addressed the issue once, to my hundreds of times, that we have infrastructure problems here in the city. And every time you pass one of these donut sprinkling ceremonies, and you sit here and have puppets and parties and ponies and puppies, it's taking money out of the general fund, and then you have fires burning, at the same time you have pipes exploding, and then you don't know what to do, and you got firings and losses of services, and we have an all-hell-break-loose scenario going on in this city, and you don't know what to do. But I know one thing you do know to do is continue to approve parades and puppies and ponies and all that stuff, and it's not right, and stop taking it... Give the money back to the people.
The matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 14, call special for cards.
Number 14. Arnold Sacks on number 14.
Yes, thank you. I believe I see a major flaw in the reason behind the city's large debt. This is relatively reaffirming the special event declaration for the Culver City Farmers Market. Could the representative of Culver City who sits on the city council, please stand up? Just a... I know, it's not a debate, it's a question. Culver City Farmers Market being, having fees waived by the LA City Council. Would you waive the fees in Malibu? Would you waive the fees in El Segundo? Would you waive the fees in, I believe Redondo Beach was mentioned, how about Hermosa? How about Long Beach? How about Arcadia? How about Burbank? How about Glendale? How about any of the surrounding 88 cities that make up LA County? Are those fees waived by the LA City Council? A major flaw in the idea process behind the city council actions. Maybe we could correct it. I have an idea. Let's reelect, let's elect some new representatives.
Michael Hunt.
Yeah, I think the city of Los Angeles have a big problem. If we're waiving fee waivers for Culver City, I think that's their responsibility. I don't know how Herb Westen's name got on this or corrects, but Culver City is not represented here in the city of Los Angeles. Let's correct the problem, let's make them pay for their own farmers market, and let's keep our money, like Zuma Dogg said, for the mom and pop stores that really need it, not for Culver City's farmer market. With that, my name is Michael Hunt, I'll be back in two and two.
Mr. Westen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members, and I'm glad, I think that those were good concerns where referenced this Culver City event, and I want to take a moment to explain it. The city of Culver City pays for the entire event. We afford them the opportunity to use half of a block. So we close that street off, but they pay for all of the officers and the actual barricades that close the street. We basically just allow them to use this half-block, and so that's what it is. It's a legitimate question, and I'm hopeful that when Mr. Parks's special event motion comes into effect, it will properly tell you how much the special events cost, because I don't know if you were here, several weeks ago, I had a special event motion, they said it cost $6,500, and all we did was close off a residential street with barricades that we already owned, so there's something amiss where it relates to the calculations, and I'm hopeful that this motion will clarify it. I do think they are legitimate concerns, and if we can tell you exactly how much it costs, we might be able to come to some accord on this.
The matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 16 was being held on a desk, and a substitute resolution has been circulated.
Number 16. We have comments, public comment cards on that.
Public hearing had been satisfied in committee.
Okay. And no comments from my colleagues? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
That leaves public comment.
All right, public comment time.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. It only took me eight years to get a PhD, so I'm used to waiting. Okay, the controller's report indicates trash fund...
Doctor, hold on a second. Hold his time. Mr. Cardenas? Doctor, hold on a second. Mr. Cardenas?
Ask to reconsider item 16?
Well, let's continue with this, and then we'll come back to that, Mr. Cardenas. Dr. Williams, go ahead. Go ahead, doctor.
Thank you. Transparency and accountability. Let's get the fees and taxes straightened out. Let's make it easy for everybody to understand where the money's coming from and where the money is going. The fact that the departments haven't cut their budgets, it's costing us only about $12, $15 a second, every second. We're only losing about a million a day based upon one council member's projection because the fire department and others aren't cutting their budgets. So where is the money going, and why can't we control it? Okay, CRA, DWP, ports, all are having to help the general fund departments, which have chosen not to cut their budgets. Why not? Where is it coming from? Can't we have the visibility to see where it's going, where it's coming from? Visibility? Oh. Certain individuals are going to hear about the new sighting study for the High Speed Rail Authority in the Information and General Services Committee? Why isn't this in energy and environment, or at least transportation? It seems that we're trying to switch everything around, much like public comments, in order to avoid public transparency and visibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
How ironic today. Upon entering City Hall, to see signage announcing the flex enrollment period for city employees is commencing. Of course, those people weighed down by the city Killing Life Ordinance will be eligible for that program also. That's the one where you just voted on Wednesday, to give everybody $3.50 more per hour so they can go out and buy affordable insurance. What a joke. Want to need stat, over the same period of time that the Killing Life Ordinance was created, that 1997, your salaries have increased 100% to $187,000 each, and you still have your benefits. At what point, at what point do you pay for the benefits? Why don't you join the Killing Life Ordinance that you so passionately propose? You're soulless individuals, building your reputations on throwaway people. Supposedly, you sent a letter of support for a national health plan, yet locally, you supported companies eliminating their health benefits in lieu of paying an extra $1.25 to their employees. You're getting more than $14 an hour? Why don't you eliminate your health plan? How much is the bottom line in the city's budget deficit caused by the health plan for the city workers? Why not enroll everybody in your living wage ordinance? Why not everybody for the city? Why not, instead of a quarter for the airports, why not $10?
Zuma Dogg, our next speaker. Zuma Dogg.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. My name's Zuma Dogg, and I'm running for Los Angeles City Council. I'd like to urge constituents, Tuesday, September 22nd, please get out the vote. Please let people know there is an election for CD2, and please let them know Zuma Dogg's on the ballot. And I hate to make it about the meetings themselves today, because we have such big problems between infrastructure problems and bankruptcy and losses of services and job loss. You know, I must say, it is very surreal. For the people watching at home, I come in here, and we've got the budget crisis, and the fires, and the pipes, and the losses of services, and the bankruptcy, and they're sitting here, they're giving away puppies, and they're having puppets, and they're talking about, they're singing, they're dancing. It is very, very surreal. I don't think you council members understand the outrage. You got Ivory Tower Syndrome. We've got an all hell crisis situation on our hands here, and you're sitting here doing the tap dancing. Are you kidding me? Put that stuff at the end. We got serious problems here. We got serious problems here. Are you kidding me? And Dennis Zine, who I'm very disappointed with, I'm here to say it's over between the love between me and Dennis Zine as far as I'm concerned, because you know, Dennis is known for one thing. It is not knowing anything about what's going on in the city regarding budget or infrastructure. I mean, he just, you know, hey, I'm gonna be no on, on proposition S, then the mayor takes him out and gets him some dances and hey, he's voting yes all of a sudden. He's a go along guy, but at least he's been the people's person. At least he's been the one that stands up for the people, for things like public com- No, no, it's over. What does this guy do? Eric Garcetti's not here today. Dennis Zine takes control for the first time. What does he do? Public comment to the end. It's not a debate. No, you can't come up and talk now. Hey, be quiet, it's not a, blah, 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 blah. Okay, so it goes right to his head. It went right to his head. I need Dennis Zine to remember why the people need him here. It's not because he's Parks and knows anything. It's not because he knows anything about anything, but he's the dumb guy that goes along with the people, and I hope he gets back to that and shame on him.
Mr. President? Michael Hunt.
Mr. President, the last speaker should be admonished not to, uh, have personal attacks against any of the council members.
He's been duly notified, and for the record, there was no love between me and Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Can you go on the record and say that? Uh, welcome, and like I told you, I'll be back in two and two. I think that the city council members should have public comment on Fridays at the beginning of it, because they're so hungry they can't listen. Everybody's eating here, and that's the truth. You miss what the people are saying, because you guys are too hungry. Everybody's eating. Bill doesn't even have his teeth in. He's eating. So, I just wanted to make that comment. But, on the other hand, we're trying to resolve an issue that Eric Garcetti's, uh, office is holding up. We're not on a, a budget till the 23rd, and we're having a lot of problems, I guess, with this girl named Sylvia out of Eric Garcetti's office, trying to get this $210,000 on the budget for Tuesday in a special meeting. So by the 22nd, when we go to the Ninth Circuit, we can try and settle this thing, and I can go home and rest and watch you guys instead of not being down here. So with that, we need to have that $207,000 or $209,000 put special on Tuesday with the special meeting. So on the 22nd, when I go to the Ninth Circuit, I can try and resolve these issues in a timely and ma- manner way that will save the city thousands of thousands of dollars, because if not, um, the city attorney, I got some real paperwork for you coming next week, so remind you, you won't be sitting back here, you'll be working day and night after next week. I got you there. But listen, we're trying to resolve these issues, get Zuma Dogg in the seat so that we'll be behind the counter instead of, in, in, in back. Matt Dowd, um, Zuma Dogg and Michael Hunt, gosh, back there with you guys. We could really have a real love affair.
Walter Bechtel. No Walter Bechtel. Anthony Manzano will be our final public speaker on this matter.
Thank you, good day. My name is Anthony Manzano. It's been a long day, and it's good to be here on this Patriot Day. I initiated this morning, or my presence, because of the Rose Hill All-Star Team, and I've been here mostly as an observer today. I've been here many times speaking to you guys in the past, and it's been a little comical today. It is Friday, the day of presentations and proclamations, but I want to, you guys to pay just a little bit of attention, since I am the last speaker. I have assisted with the fire department. I've served a close to 40 hours of volunteer time as a cert member. I've had the unique honorable privilege to serve directly inside the incident command center, uh, in the sheriff's command center, actually, answering the phones the night that the two firefighters passed away. So my service is dedication, and it shows that it's, it's accurate and true. I want to mention, uh, as a reminder, that October 2nd is Live Strong Day. I have worked with Lance Armstrong here in Los Angeles to be his Los Angeles Live Strong Army Leader. Uh, another reminder is, I've also worked with the Earthquake Preparedness Agency and the Earthquake Country Alliance, uh, for having the Great Southern California Shakeout, which will be October 15th. Remember the date, 10:15 at 10:15. It'll be statewide. One thing I want to mention that some of the other speakers had brought to your attention is your attention span. Most of you guys, uh, maybe either are not paying attention, either in the back, taking notes on the computer, on the phone. I have noticed maybe at the minimum, 10% of you guys have been paying attention, at the maximum, 50% of you guys have been paying attention. Uh, one of them paying the most attention has not been any of the council members, but actually the city clerk. He's been, been doing a pretty good job today. Uh, so, uh, to close, I want to say that there has been some disruptions, some distractions as well, but most of them maybe doesn't come from the public. I've also been counting, uh, times up to 36 staff members taking notes, answering phones, interrupting the council members, when you guys should actually be doing your job, paying attention to what's going on here before you with commissioners, before you're here with speakers, and maybe I could have the sergeant of arms tell the people all standing back there. At times, there was 36 of them standing back there, so you know what? Step to the back or take a seat.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Um, Ms. Hahn?
I think you were gonna say when I was...
You have your, um, button push, Ms. Hahn? Do you have a comment?
I think, uh, he's probably gonna say when I was...
Okay, uh, Mr. Cardenas, you wanted to reconsider an item?
Yeah, but before that, I, I just wanted to remind, uh, the person who participated in public comment, I hope he understands and appreciates the fact that we do have public comment perhaps more than any other elected body in Southern California, perhaps California as a whole, um, and we're not perfect, uh, probably in the nation, who knows? But, but in addition to that, I understand that right here on each one of our council members' desks, we have the computer, and in it is, uh, we could see you on the screen as you're speaking, and every single person who's speaking as well. So please take that into account. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Cardenas has a matter to reconsider.
That was item 16.
On number 16, open the roll. Reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that matter is now before us. Mr. Cardenas?
She, she wanted to speak. I just wanted to vote no, that's all, I don't need to speak.
On number 16, Mr. Clerk, you want to remind us what that matter is?
Uh, this is a resolution supporting the Bay Area's council call for a state constitutional convention.
Mr. Rosenthal?
To make a quick comment on this. Folks, uh, the, the constitution of the great state of California is in a dysfunctional state. Um, we have seen what happens in Sacramento. Never do we get a budget on time, never do we get the kind of action we need to have. Uh, Mr. Wesson knows as speaker up there that to make it all work is, is a major challenge. The idea of a constitutional convention is for the people to take a good look at some of the major issues impacting us. A, our whole budget process up there, how we tax ourselves and how we spend our money. Uh, two, uh, the whole idea of the initiative process, what it's about, how does it operate? Um, you know, these are big, significant issues, and we're grown up peoples. We've been around now for, for a long time as America, and we shouldn't be afraid to have a constitutional convention, to put a lot of things on the table. I am looking forward to the November 2010, um, initiative on the ballot, where we can vote yes for a constitutional convention. Let's see if we can make our state government more effective in the issues that impact all of us. For instance, another one, be it the, the campaign finance reform or term limits. It is a joke that they have six years up there in the assembly. They barely know what they're doing and then they're out. So who runs Sacramento from a, from an assembly standpoint? The lobbyists and the bureaucrats. So let's talk about term limits. Let's look, talk about clean money. But it's a healthy process for the great state of California, the biggest economy in America, uh, and the sixth largest in the world, that we get a grip on our own state, and that we're able to reform it and do what we need to do in the 21st century. So I'm a big believer in this constitutional convention. I participated in a forum on that. I heard some of the great people talk about how it would work. A lot of these people used to be on my television show where we did informative discussions on these issues. So I urge you colleagues to support the concept of a constitutional convention, and let's let the people decide if they want one on the November ballot of 2010. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you. Um, well, I, I certainly, uh, am rising to support the idea of allowing Californians to decide whether or not they do want a constitutional convention. Dennis Zine and I, uh, sort of sat on our own, uh, constitutional convention here in Los Angeles from 1997 and 1999. Both of us were looking to reform our city's constitution, our city charter, and we actually, it was a great two years where we had that great civic debate in Los Angeles about what people thought worked and what they thought didn't work about the city of Los Angeles. We came forward with, uh, a number of reforms. Uh, not everybody was happy, uh, but at least we had the opportunity to, to debate city government. Uh, it's clear that Californians are unhappy with the way this state is being run. Uh, an overwhelming majority of people in California feel like, uh, the legislature in Sacramento is not, uh, looking out for their best concerns, does not like the way they make decisions, does not like the way they pass the budget. Uh, and I know, uh, we speak, uh, as, uh, those who are in charge of our own municipal government, uh, and every other city in this country, I think, uh, in, in the state, was very upset when we worked really hard to balance our budgets. We worked really hard to come up with agreements with our employee unions, and we came up, uh, with ideas of shared sacrifice, only, uh, to have those legislatures in Sacramento vote to come after more than $120 million of our money. Uh, we stand to lose another 66 million in gas tax money. Uh, I think what Californians want is, uh, the ability to have local control, uh, the ability to decide whether or not we, uh, think we know how to run our fire department, we know how to run our police department, we know how to pave our streets, we know what to do, uh, with our money here. So certainly it's time, I believe, for reform. Uh, not sure whether a constitutional convention is the way, uh, we're gonna go, but there are a number of ideas out there. It's time to reform California. It's time to return, I believe, the power back into the hands of those of us who are locally elected to run our cities. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts, then Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't repeat what my colleagues just mentioned, they articulated very well for the need to have this, um, but I do want to point out that I've circulated a substitute motion from the original motion. I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Parks and Rosenthal for supporting, uh, the original and the substitute motion. And the substitute motion, uh, points out two important items, and that is that we as a city would support not only reviewing, uh, the financing of the budgeting governance and how it gets adopted, but also to look at the state school finance system, and that we ensure that whoever is at this convention reflects not only political diversity, but ethnic and racial diversity of the state as well, and the delegates be selected in proportion to the population of each different part of the state. Uh, that are, that are some of the items that we pointed out in our substitute motion, that we will support this so long as those items are included in the final, uh, approach that we take. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
I think we all know the state has a lot of problems, and I've looked at it in the legislature, I've looked at it as an interested observer before and after that time. Several of us have served, uh, in, in the legislature, and we all know, it's not the individuals that happen to be there. There are a lot of sharp people that we served with, and a lot of capable people. We have institutionalized dysfunction, and I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to serve on a body that doesn't have that, where you don't have the six-year term limits so people are turned in and out before they really master what they're doing, where you don't have a two-thirds budget requirement where the minority party is able to stop any kind of a solution to the state's problems. You don't have an initiative process whereby the largest, most powerful, most moneyed special interests dominate the process, and regular people and real interests have, have great difficulty qualifying anything. We really need a lot of changes. They're all, they're all not individuals, they're all how, how the process works, and all of that can be changed at a constitutional convention. It's a little risky, but the way things are set up is so dysfunctional now that I think we have to take our best shot and see if we can, can right the, the ship of state in California before we all go down with it. So I think this is a great idea. I strongly support it. Let's get LA behind it.
Mr. Cardenas, then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much. Having been a, a, a former legislator, I can tell you that there are a lot of good things that happen out of the legislature and with governors, et cetera, but at the same time, um, there are, are many things that need to be changed, and I, I appreciate, Councilmember Weezer, you taking on some of the recommendations that my staff had shared with your staff about, uh, the four elements that the final document should contain, and, and that's the condition of your motion, that the council would support if they contain those, those policy matters. However, just because a final document contains those matters, those four matters, doesn't mean that it'll have other things that could hurt the city of Los Angeles in it as well in addition to those matters, and it doesn't mean that the final document won't have some issues that will really hurt the state of California. See, that's my concern. Once a constitutional convention is had and once it's convened, then it opens up every box, be it a Pandora's box, a good box, a bad box, something needs to be changed or not. And then also to Ms. Hahn, I agree with her that the voters ultimately should always have the right to make these big decisions at the polls, but at the same time, sometimes out of emotion and perception, the voters get it wrong. I believe, and the proof is in the pudding, that when the voters threw out, a few years ago, they threw out a governor, and then they ended up getting this other guy who currently is our governor. There's no question that the state of California is in a worse position today than it was when they threw out the last governor. And as a matter of fact, out of emotion, they believed that this past governor that they threw out was a spend, uh, a, a tax and spend liberal, which as a matter of fact, I served with him, and he wasn't perfect. Sometimes we didn't get along, but he was a lot more conservative and a lot more respectful to the coffers of the state of California than the current governor is. The proof is in the pudding. And in addition to that, somebody got elected to governor by saying, "I'm gonna blow up the boxes and I'm not gonna do anything that this other governor proposed to do about the state budget." And this particular governor did exactly what the last governor said he would do, that the voters threw out, and then he, this current governor did even worse. And I'll also add that there are things that the constitutional convention can definitely correct. I do believe that the two-thirds vote requirement of the legislature to pass a budget needs to be changed. It does need to be changed. But with a constitutional convention, they can change that. Also, I can guarantee you this, if there's a constitutional convention, seniors who are watching, if there's a constitutional convention, this constitutional convention will change Proposition 13. And I know it's unpopular for people to talk about whether they think it ought to be changed or not, so we'll skip that. But the bottom line is, the voters are gonna have to contend with this constitutional convention, if convened, will in fact impact dramatically Proposition 13. So a constitutional convention is trying to correct things in a very dramatic way. It's like taking a sledgehammer when really we should be taking care of business with other tools that are available to the state of California and also available to the voters as well. So that's why I'm, I'm in opposition of it. It is a definitely an overkill and a very, very dangerous place to go, and this constitutional convention on top of that, I do not think will be very well balanced. It will definitely be overshadowed by people who are looking at things more like professors and not looking at things as they should, and looking at a well-balanced way of what is realistic and practical for us to afford the state of California in order to change something so sacred as the constitution of the state of California. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Councilmembers, and, um, is, uh, the CLA here on this? Can you hold my time? Does that have any CLA?
Someone here from the CLA's office on this matter?
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Avak?
Hey, Clark?
We need to call someone.
Yeah, if you want a box.
Well, then we'll call someone.
Star?
You have some comments, then we can, uh, wait for them. You want to go to Mr. Wesson and come back?
Well, this is a very pivotal point. When the largest city in, in California takes its vote, and we are the council that represents that body, I'm not clear what the implications are. The comments may be of concern for Cardenas. To me, opens up a whole other area of concerns, because it is easy to have this reaction. We know we need to change this, but what's the opportunity cost? What house is being laid on the table? What other consequences come from this action? Now, his points that are being raised, I have, this is our first time I hear this. So...
Mr. Miller is here now.
I'd like to ask Mr. Miller, uh, and hopefully we don't put you at disadvantage, Mr. Miller, because it's rather startling what I'm just hearing, is on the one hand, like, I sit on the executive board of National Cities... the executive board of National Cities. I hear from other mayors and councils throughout the country that how ridiculous it is in California to have that two-thirds vote. How do we get any business done? How do we react to these, to a crisis? Now, this convention, supposedly, is going to address that. But what other implications are there for this convention? If you have any thoughts, any insight, I'd like to hear them, and maybe perhaps have some kind of feedback as to what are the pros and cons, because here we're asked to vote for this today, and I don't think we've had sufficient discussion to discuss to go over what the implications could be. So when you speak of a Pandora's box, I mean, Councilman Cardenas referred to this Pandora's box, referred to this academic approach to this change. What does it mean in reality? What does it mean, given the voting tendencies of this state? Can you share any light as to what this convention means, and how does it impact the city of Los Angeles? Please hold my time.
Well, you know, clearly there are different approaches to trying to solve some of the problems. And Mr. Cardenas is correct. You know, once a Constitutional Convention is established, there isn't necessarily, there is no control over what issues that they're looking at. On the other hand...
Who attends this convention? Who is qualified to be at the convention?
Well, there would be appointees...
By whom?
...to the commission. I'm sorry, I had a little bit of a loss here. I believe that there would be local, representatives of local government as well as the state. I'm sorry, my staff isn't here, and I don't recall what the exact appointing authorities are or mechanism is.
I'd like to, not to put Mr. Miller on the spot, but could we continue this so that we can get the kind of information and get some insight that really allows us to understand what this means? I mean, who gets to go to this convention? Who's represented? How do the interest groups get involved? What are the stakeholders? Who's listening to whom at this convention? I don't know.
Do we want to continue?
Again, at this point, a lot of those details are not worked out. It's now at a point of supporting the concept of a Constitutional Convention, that the details of exactly who the delegates would be and how they would be made up. It's the Bay Area Council of Governments is one entity that's supporting this, and the attempt is to try to get a sort of a groundswell to creating a mechanism to create the Constitutional Convention.
I'd like to address the makers of the motion. Would it be an inconvenience to continue this perhaps a week so we can get the kind of responses and some basic questions answered, and so what the impact is to the city?
We could continue this, and in fact, this item has been agendized for over a month, and we've continued, we've continued it several times already because other council offices raise the same types of issues. You have, Mr. Reyes, and we will be very happy to sit with you in the interim to come answer those questions. And in fact, just let me state that a lot of answers to those questions, we're not going to have. That's part of the democratic process, where we don't know how people are going to ultimately get appointed or elected to this, and we don't know what they're going to come out with at the end. That's part of the democratic process. Whatever this state convention comes out with, we, as a city, will have a right to either support or oppose. It's the very beginning of a process that, as other council members have articulated, needs to happen.
Mr. Wesson is next. Do we want to continue this matter or continue to debate it?
We could continue this item.
Mr. Reyes, would that satisfy your...
...to answer those questions.
That would be fine, and if we could get something in writing, at least to give us the most current information. I'd like to understand, who does the appointing? Where does the money come from? I mean, who's actually sponsoring this effort? Who establishes the rules? Who's allowed access? I mean, I think those are critical points if we're going to open up this or restructure how California behaves in the democratic process.
Mr. Wesson, you also had your button pushed. There's now a matter to continue.
And I just want to speak for a second on this because I think, even though we have not discussed this long, that we have begun a very good discussion. And I share Mr. Reyes' concerns. I share Mr. Cardenas' concerns. But, members, I support this concept because something has to change. And as Mr. Weezer said, this is like exploring a forest where there are no paths. And so in the event that this does occur, it's going to be incumbent upon this body to ensure that we are engaged at every step of the way. And I also agree that this could be dangerous, especially if we are not engaged. But I think when we were in the legislature, we tried through the initiative process to change certain things, and we failed. And we did that on several occasions. You hear that the popularity of the legislature is at an all-time low. That's right, and it's wrong. When you check the popularity for each state senator and each assembly person, it is significantly higher. The people just dislike the fact that we cannot function. And I think it was Bill who hit the nail on the head, and it was Paul, is that I served with, so 120 of us, so I served with 119 other people. They, for the most part, really wanted to do the right thing, and they worked very hard to do that. The reason why they, we, were unsuccessful is because the way the Constitution is constructed. It is constructed to create failure. So it's going to have to be changed. But we are going to have to really be engaged. Mr. Cardenas mentioned concerns about the possibility of the city losing resources or what have you. I submit to you that every year, they take money from us anyway. And if somehow we're engaged in this process, and we can reduce that or eliminate that, I think that's what we want to do. And I would think that cities would have a lot of influence. But like Mr. Reyes said, I don't have a clue how this is going to be constructed. So what I would recommend, because I believe we don't have a choice, is that we try to obtain all of the answers that we can, and that this council should have a healthy debate. Because like Bill said, this, we're only one of three states that in order to pass a budget takes two-thirds votes. The initiative process is out, in fact, if I could come up with a word that's worse than, or a saying worse than out of control, I would use it. No, worse than dysfunctional. The, Tony referenced the governor being recalled. You technically are not supposed to recall a governor unless he's a crook. Gray Davis didn't steal anything. A group of people were able to recall him because they were upset with him because of the VLF, the license fee. He did nothing, no criminal malfeasance or any of that. That needs to be altered. The fact that in every other government, the majority rules, that's the way that it should be. That needs to be seriously discussed. And there was one other point I wanted to make, and then I will, we'll sit down. No, I'm having a senior moment.
All right.
Is that this state, for whatever reason, is supportive of term limits. And I don't believe we will ever change that. But there needs to be a serious discussion about adjusting the actual time limits. One of the only ways that you're going to be able to go up in a state capitals run by different parties and function is if you trust representatives of the other party. And the only way that that will occur is with time. And the, that somehow we need to have a discussion for that to change. And the last thing, and even though I have a lot of friends that were lobbyists and consultants, they are the ones with the institutional knowledge. They are the ones that will go to the minority party and say, "You can't do this." So I think I'm glad, whoever reconsidered, considered this, I'm glad you did. I just highly recommend that when we have this debate to the leadership, that it be set at a time when we have a thin agenda so that we could afford this, the type of dialogue that it deserves. I think everyone has raised some excellent points where it relates to this, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We have Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weezer, and I think we're, mood is to continue this matter, but Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weezer, Mr. Reyes?
Just for the record, I want to be very clear. I know we need to change. I understand the system is broken. It's obvious, given all the pressures and all the ugliness that's occurring in this city, especially in the middle-class and poorer districts where how we are faltering is hurting them in a very real way every day. So we need to change this. I just want to make sure that we understand under what parameters, under what consequences, what are the ramifications, what are the end results? Are we going to be able to deal with inequities? Are we going to look at access? Are we going to look at equal representation? I mean, those are the points I want to make sure we address. But I do believe we need to change this, and I am very hopeful that our own sense of commitment to our city and our state will prevail through this type of discussion. So I welcome that opportunity. I thank you for making the motion, for giving us that opportunity to drill down to that level of understanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weezer, you're going to make a motion to continue?
Yeah, I'd like to move then that we continue this item to September 22nd.
What was that date?
September 22nd. That gives us two weeks. It also gives the CLA an opportunity to contact the council offices to have all the questions answered. And as Mr. Wesson stated, there's going to be probably very little that we do know. But we do know that for the state to do nothing is not an option. When we see a semblance of someone trying to do something, we've got to be engaged because it is going to have profound impacts on the city, and the sooner we engage in this, the better. I'd rather be in the ballgame than not in the ballgame. This is our way of saying, this is what we support, but we only support it inasmuch as you discuss and proceed in this fashion. With the little information we have about this, I think we should engage it at this time. So for the 22nd, if we could continue it to that time.
That'll be the directive, to continue to the 22nd, and the CLA's office can get the information. Thank you very much. Mr. Wesson, another comment?
Do we have a clue as to what's going to be on the agenda? Is it going to be a, I don't want us to rush this.
Well, only that'll be up to Mr. Garcetti's office. You will not be in session after next Tuesday, so there will be a fair amount of spillover. But I do think that we need to try and hear this as soon as possible, so we will be working with their office to try and keep the agenda as light as we can.
And you know something, Mr. Cardenas? Not that we need additional work, but we might want to think about some kind of a temporary subcommittee that has...
It means the full committees, and I'm thinking that this might be relevant to come to the committee that I chair.
Sure.
Unless there is objection from the maker of the motion.
Rules, Mr. Garcetti's, Rules and what's that committee called?
No, it doesn't.
Rules and election government. We deal with the endorsement or non-endorsement of state legislation, federal legislation...
That has now been transferred over to the Information Technology Governmental Affairs Committee.
We'll work out where it's going to go.
Because what I was thinking, Mr. Cardenas, you know, we might want to set up something that has like a Kerets, you, me, Alicon, or some of us that have walked both sides of the street.
Very well. So let's continue it. The council president will determine where it's going to go.
It's been waived already out of, or discussed.
Give it to Kerets.
Okay. So that closes that matter. It will be continued to 22nd. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your input on that matter. All items today are forthwith. Mr. Clerk, all items forthwith. And to our viewers, we have a special meeting on Tuesday, September 15th. What time does that start, Mr. Clerk?
That will be starting at 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM on September 15th, our next meeting, and then we were in recess the 16th and the 18th. So that's the schedule for next week. Mr. Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer, please.
That clears the desk.
Very well. Any announcements, colleagues? All right. Mr. Parks, for announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to make sure everybody knows that Monday's Budget and Finance Meeting starts at 1:00. It's in this room. I would encourage each member to have at least a staff member present that can prepare you for this budgetary process that's going to take care of on Tuesday. So again, it's 1:00 in chambers. And also for the public, the president of the council has agreed to have the Van Nuys and Harbor locations for the committee so people can view it there and have public comment from those two satellites.
So it's this Monday at 1:00 here in chambers for the budget?
That's right.
Thank you. Mr. LeBonge?
Tomorrow at 10:00 AM at the Dodger Stadium. There'll be a memorial for Ted Hall, Fire Captain, LA County, and Arnoldo Quinones, firefighter specialist, LA County. These are the two firefighters that gave their life and service to the county of Los Angeles and that are still fighting the fire, the station fire. The public is invited. It's 10:00 AM at the Dodger Stadium.
Mr. Reyes, announcements?
Yes, tomorrow we will be celebrating the opening of the new Children's Meadow at MacArthur Park. I'm going to thank the voters for their support of Proposition K, the 2.25 million investment. For years, I would say decades, the children of that area, MacArthur Park, were relegated to play on dirt and dust, never had access to a green field because of the use of it. Now we'll have an artificial field. It is the crown of other crown jewels that we've been able to put into this great facility. It'll complement the band shelf. It will be tomorrow at 11:00 AM. The MacArthur Park, you can use the Metro Red Line and stop. It's the intersection of West Sixth Street and South Park View. We'll have advocates there, the youth empowered through Scholastic Sports Services, we'll advocate for safe homes, collective space. We'll be welcoming and thanking our general manager, John Kirk-Muckry. And again, I welcome all of you. It's something that finally has happened, and we've waited many, many years for this. And I also want to thank those who will support our firefighters at Dodger Stadium. This is the first district, and I want to welcome them, and hopefully also show our support for our firefighters. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Mr. Weezer, announcements?
Very much, Mr. President. Tonight, at the Sulegian High School football game, we will present a tribute to the 9/11 heroes at halftime. That is at 960 South Soto Street. We will also acknowledge our LAPD Centurions and thank them for the wonderful work they've been doing to support local charities. And this Sunday, 10:00 AM, at the corner of Lorena and Cesar Chavez, is the start of the traditional Mexican Independence Parade. We invite you all to come out, enjoy a festive parade that's been going on for many decades here in Los Angeles.
Any other announcements, colleagues? A couple announcements in the San Fernando Valley. Tonight is the Fernando Award Dinner at the Marriott Hotel. The Fernando Award is the highest award in the San Fernando Valley. And tomorrow, there is the Second Annual West Valley Memorial Motorcycle Ride at West Valley Station, if you're interested, on a motorcycle. West Valley Police Station on Van Owen for a ride to support the West Valley Memorial Fund. Also, the West Valley Boys and Girls Club, Third Annual Mile of Quarters. This is the official kickoff. It'll be at the Westfield Topanga, 6600 Topanga Canyon. Bring your quarters and help the West Valley Boys and Girls Club. Also this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, is the LA Greek Festival, and that is going to be at St. Sophia's Cathedral, 1324 South Normandy. A wonderful event with wonderful food and entertainment. And on Sunday, there is the 11th Annual Ovarian Cancer Coalition Walk/Run Event. That's going to be at CBS Studios on Radford in Studio City. Everyone's invited to attend and help support that cause. And that is it for items in the West Valley. Journey motions, colleagues? Journey motions. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. And I'm sure there have been a lot of commemor- And I'm sure there have been a lot of commemorations all over the city, all over the country today, but certainly we do take a moment now to remember eight years ago, the nearly 3,000 people who perished on the World Trade Center on 9/11. And certainly, even though we've been away for eight years, it really, when you stop and think about what a terrible tragedy that was, it'll be a defining moment. I know for many of us, we remember where we were and how that impacted our lives, our children's lives. So certainly, we want to always remember those that perished on this day, eight years ago. But I also wanted to adjourn the memory of Thornton Simmons, who passed away recently on August 29th. He was 67. He was a longtime resident of Los Angeles. Thornton was an accomplished stage and screen actor. He wrote, directed, and produced plays, and was also a talented songwriter and musician. He was a devout Christian who practiced what he preached. Thornton was honored many times for his outstanding efforts to promote peace, teaching young people about the perils of gang violence and encouraging them to get on the right path. He was a good friend of my good friend, Harry Bay, and actually, he produced Harry's play, which is entitled "Gangs Thou shalt not kill." He is survived by five of his six children, Johnny, Wendy, Andre, Jennifer, and Pamela, and they have said he will be dearly missed.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Judy Ramirez. She is the loving partner of George Bolanos of Bow Heights, whose various siblings are involved in various law enforcement agencies here in the Los Angeles County area. Ms. Ramirez passed away on Friday, August 14th, after a long battle with cancer for two and a half years. She died peacefully in her sleep. George and Judy were happily married for 12 years. They have one son, George Bolanos, who is eight years old. Judy Ramirez was laid to rest in Whittier on August 24th.
Mr. Coretche?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Armie Archer, a world-famous entertainment journalist. He was born in the Bronx and graduated from UCLA in 1941 at age 19. He enlisted in the Navy and eventually attended officer training at Columbia University. In 1945, Archer was given his first break at the Associated Press. In 1953, Daily Variety hired him to replace movie columnist Sheila Graham. His Just for Variety column appeared on Page Two of Daily Variety and swiftly became very popular in Hollywood. He broke countless exclusive stories, reporting from film sets, announcing pending deals, giving news of star-related hospitalizations, marriages, and births. His most significant scoop came in 1985, when he reported that Rock Hudson was undergoing treatment for AIDS, despite denials by Hudson's spokesman at the time. In 1984, he was given a star on Hollywood's Walk of Fame in front of Mann's Chinese Theater, where he had emceed dozens of movie premieres. He was married to Selma Archer, a former actress, and they lived in my district in Westwood, California. He died at UCLA Medical Center from a rare disease thought to be the result of his exposure to asbestos in the Navy during World War II, and he will be sorely missed.
Ms. Rosenthal?
Yes, and I obviously would like to second it. I knew him quite well, and when I was president of the Press Club in 1999, as we reorganized it and re-energized it, we honored him that year at the Press Club, and he was the big draw for the annual fundraiser. He was always very pleasant, very positive. He believed in the Press Club as an opportunity for journalists to share notes, compare notes, and empower themselves when we see journalism suffering so much by corporate America. He was there for us. He was a good soul and well thought of by his fellow journalists, and I'm honored to second that motion, Mr. Coretche.
All members on that, for Mr. Archer, all members. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourned motions. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Janet Pastor, who was born in New Orleans in 1925, passed away September 9th, 2009. She was the first of three children. She graduated from Public School Number 35 in New Orleans, Louisiana. In '43, her family moved to Los Angeles. She met her husband, John Henry, who was a member of the United States Air Corps. They were married in 1946. Janet worked as for Security Pacific Bank for 23 years in the Czech Distribution Center. She supported her husband's work, who was a deacon at the Figueroa Street Church of Christ. She became very actively involved in Boy Scouts and a variety of other school booster activities. She survived by her husband of 63 years and is survived by her two sons and other family members. Her funeral will be held Saturday, September 12th, 10:00 a.m. at Figueroa Church of Christ at 455 West 57th Street. I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of Gertrude Baines. Many of us remember recently, she was, got a great deal of notoriety that she was the oldest person in the world. She lived at the Western Convalescent Home on Adams Boulevard. She reached the age of 115. She was a native of Shelton, Georgia, where her father was believed to have been a slave, and she was born in 1894. When she was born, the United States flag had only 44 stars, and that Grover Cleveland was the president. She married at a young age, had one daughter who passed away at the age of 18. Again, in November, she received a great deal of notoriety. Oldest person of African-American descent and the third oldest person in the world, she cast her vote for Barack Obama in the presidency. Later in January, she was notified that she then became the oldest person in the world in January 2009. Again, she received a great deal of notoriety. We have a motion in place to name the corner of Cimarron and Adams in her honor. But some of the things, it's kind of remarkable that since her birth, she basically was born when the states of Utah, Oklahoma, New Mexico, Arizona, Hawaii, and Alaska were not part of the Union. She was born before the first successful controlled flight, air flight, in December 1903 by the Wright Brothers. She was born before the Ford Motor Company put out its first car in 1903. She was born before the first extended radio broadcast of a human voice in December 1906. And she was born before the first transcontinental phone call, which was in 1915. She was 26 years old when the 19th Amendment was ratified, where women were given the right to vote. And she also was born before the first television, which was 1928, and she was born before penicillin was discovered in 1926. She was 71 years old when Medi-Cal and Medicare were put into law by President Johnson. And again, she was the, one of her proudest moments was to be able to vote for Barack Obama in November 2008. And she is, I'd ask that all members join in on that. And although, again, we no longer have the oldest person in the world, that title now goes to a young lady who's 114 in Japan, who was born May 10th, 1895.
All members. Ms. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael Rosenthal died two nights ago. Michael Rosenthal was born July 30th, 1953. He was a good friend of mine, and he graduated from the California State University in Chino. He was a constituent in the Pacific Palisades. Michael was a businessman and an entrepreneur who not only had a good mind for business, he also had a social consciousness and a heart. He took over Instant Replay in the early 80s, a company based in Marina Del Rey that provided video security largely for commercial buildings such as The Grove. Successful as he was with Instant Replay, Michael truly found his heart and followed his passion when he started the weekly newspaper in Santa Monica called The Santa Monica Mirror, for a city he cared deeply about. Michael was not a journalist. He had no experience in the newspaper business, but he was intent on starting a newspaper to fill a gap left in local news coverage when Copely newspaper shut down the Santa Monica outlook. A member of the Green Party in California, Michael was committed to including a variety of different political and social perspectives and voices in The Santa Monica Mirror. He also had not been a journalist to start, but early on, he started writing 600, 800 words in each issue of The Mirror and taking photographs and photography himself, an opportunity he valued, allowing him to express himself in new ways and to speak out on issues that mattered to him. Prior to starting The Santa Monica Mirror, Michael had an understanding of journalism, a bet from the other side. He had handled press relations from 1998 until 2000 for the Green Party candidate Dan Hamburg, who ran for California governor. In addition to his business ventures and his social consciousness, Michael loved the outdoors. He was influenced by Native American culture and teachings. He loved to camp and to hike, and he was a strong supporter of organizations such as the Surf Rider Foundation and Heal the Bay. Michael was appointed a member of the Green Party County Central Council in Los Angeles. He was also a member of the Board of Directors of Vote for Environment, a nonprofit that Dan Hamburg founded. Michael passed away peacefully early Wednesday morning in his sleep. He survived by his wife Lori, who I spoke to that morning, and their son Dylan. You know, I'll never forget, one day I was at his home for dinner, brought him a half a dozen eggs. We had a great moment, and he said he wants to be able to survive, to take that young boy and bring him up. And he did everything he could to survive. Frankly, he's been suffering from cancer for years, but was determined to keep going. He did have a huge impact on his son because his son is now a teenager and will always remember his dad. His father, Carl, is still there, of course, his sister, Marcia, and his nephews, Brian and Jason. He will be interred this Sunday at 10:00 a.m. I'll be going to that, at Mount Sinai, 5950 Forest Lawn Drive in Los Angeles. May he rest in peace, and thank you, Michael, for all you've done for community and for me.
Thank you, Mr. Rolandall. Mr. Rosenthal. That concludes... Mr. Clerk, call the roll, please. Thank you. We'll see you next Tuesday. Have a good weekend.